Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Isopropyl planning board meeting for Wednesday, July 13. If you're here to speak on an application, we just remind the applicants to keep their presentations to 30 minutes or less. And we remind members of the public, please fill out a yellow card in the back if you want to speak on a specific application. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less. That being said, I'm just going to ask everyone to stand for the pledge. And since Mike is standing already, he can lead us. If anyone is here for item number 10 this evening on the agenda, which is Juan Pacheco, that item will not be heard this evening. It's been adjourned. That being said, first item on the agenda, Augusto Malin Trucolo, SP 2019-062, South Side of Johnson Avenue, 100 feet east of Chestnut Avenue, Ronconcomer, 950 Johnson Avenue. Applicant requests a buffer relaxation in connection with the expansion of an existing office industrial building in order to change the use to a mini storage building. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening to the board. My name is Joseph Clemens, partner in the firm Germany Clemens Architecture PC, located at 3275 Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite B11, Ronconcomer, New York 11779. I'm speaking to you this evening on behalf of my client, 950 Johnson Avenue LLC, in regards to the presently existing 1.837 acre parcel situated on the south side of Johnson Avenue and approximately 100 feet east of Chestnut Avenue. It's a property address of 950 Johnson Avenue, Ronconcomer, New York 11779, property tax map number 0500 0630106. The application presented before you proposes a buffer relaxation in connection with the expansion of an existing office industrial building in order to change the use to a proposed mini storage building. To further clarify, the application requests building additions to which will convert the presently occupied and used office industrial building of approximately 29,100 square feet into a mini storage building of approximately 67,056 square feet. Initially, our office had submitted a site plan for review to the engineering department as a mini storage building as is considered as of right use within the industrial one zoning district and allows for an increased FAR of .42 to 1.0, subject to complying with specific criteria. It was the intent of our initial application to comply with the requirements of Section 68-344 of the Town of Isopropyl Zone Code. However, per an initial planning review made by Sean Colgan, it was recommended that the applicant pursue abandonment of Eastern Street to increase required buffer area and lessen the FAR. Since receipt, our office has been in the process of abandoning Eastern Street as requested. However, in doing so, would inevitably require a buffer relaxation, thus the reason for which we are here. Prior to Eastern Street abandonment request, our application proposed a FAR of 83.8%, however, provided 16.9% front yard landscaping as well as 25.3% total landscape area, percentages which comply with the Town of Isopropyl Zone Code for that Section 68-344. Following the request to abandon Eastern Street, the total area of the site increases to approximately 1.964 acres, thus decreasing the proposed FAR to 78.4%. By abandoning Eastern Street, however, which should be noted as only 17 foot in width, will move the property line adjacent to the Long Island Railroad, which is Zoned Residence A, and requires a 25-foot buffer. As a result, the front yard landscaping proposed is 14.3%, however, the total landscaping area excluding the buffer is 20%, with 28.3% including the buffer. Being that we would no longer meet the criteria allowing for the increased FAR, we were required to seek relief from the zoning board of appeals. On June 21st, 2022, the zoning board had granted setback in FAR variances allowing for us to proceed. Due to the existing circumstances of the site, the buffer relaxation is necessary to accommodate the flow of traffic and to provide emergency access to the rear of the building. As per the plans provided, you can see that only a portion of the buffer area is to be encroached upon, approximately eight foot, and the remainder will be planted with buffer plantings per the Town of Isopropyl subdivision and land development regulations. Also, so you are aware, our office has already received elevation approval from the planning department complying with the requirements of the zoning code as relates to superior architecture. As you can see from the plan set before you, it was our intent to satisfy the town's request, and as my client was simply wishes to establish and maintain a property which conforms to the Town of Isopropyl requirements while also providing something which contextually fits in with the surrounding area. The improvements request will become a benefit to the local community and enhance the overall aesthetic. New street trees, decorative plantings, and continuous used bushes will be added, which will enhance the look of the site and conform with the Town of Isopropyl standard. The site will inevitably be less intense than that of the office in industrial use. As such, we would respectfully request that you recommend this buffer relaxation so my client can continue to be a pleasant neighbor while also enhancing the Ronconcomer community. And I would also like to note that earlier today, we did receive conditions which my client was in agreement with. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time, if any.
Thank you. We'll come back for any questions. I do know that anyone who filled out a yellow card, anyone who come in later wished to be heard on this application? Do you want to be heard on the first one? No? Okay, I'll take that as a no. On the first item, well then, come on up and speak now. You can give your name and fill out the card afterwards. You can fill out, this is the first one, which is the self-storage. You can fill out the paperwork afterwards. Do you want to be heard on it?
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Gonzalez for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As stated by Mr. Clemens, this is an industrial one-zone property, about two acres. Currently improved with a 29,100 square foot office industrial building, sealed in 1954. Proposal for you tonight is to expand the building with a second story addition, an addition off the rear of the building, in order to convert that use to a mini storage facility that is approximately 67,000 square feet. This property was granted front, rear, and FAR variance as part of ZBA 460-22. There is a paper street eastern that is adjacent to this property on the south side. As is standard for any land use application in the town, if it is determined an adjacent paper street is serving no purpose for a future road, and the property has rights to it, staff requires it to be abandoned and consolidated into the subject property. In assistance by doing so, this property will now be adjacent to a commercial residential split zone railroad, which then requires a 25-foot buffer off the southern property line. The building must maintain the standard drive aisle width to conform with fire code. At the narrowest point of the buffer, only 17 feet can be provided, which is the entire paper street that is being abandoned. That portion will still provide a double sawtooth row of mature evergreens, and the rest of the buffer will be a fully compliant 25 feet with the standard double row and deciduous trees in the front. As this is buffering a railroad, and the nearest residences are even further away on the south side of Eastern Street, the request does have merit. The planted buffer is an improvement of vegetation in an area that can be managed by the property instead of an unopened paper street. Based on this, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Anything further from the applicant? Is there a motion? Mr. Frugiar?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing and grant this application subject to staff covenants and restrictions.
Motion by Mr. Frugiar to close the public hearing and grant the application subject to covenants and restrictions. Second by Mr. Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions, the application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Item two on the agenda, Planning Board Public Hearing, Bola E&amp; Realty LLC, PB 2022-009, southeast corner of Bay Shore Road, County Route 57, and Manor Lane, Bay Shore, 236 Bay Shore Road. Applicant requests the Planning Board special permit for convenience market in the Business 3 District pursuant to 68-302.1D. Site plan modifications may also be requested as part of this application. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow board members. For the applicant, David Altman from the law office of Brown, Altman de Leo, 538 Broad Hallow Road, Suite 301, Melville, New York. Good to see everybody, and hopefully everybody's enjoying the summer. I know this board is quite familiar with this application, this matter having appeared before the board in 2018, 19 relative to Bola's application. Subsequent to that application, the board had, and I'm summarizing prior proceedings, the board had recommended to the town board at that time not to modify covenants and restrictions, and did not grant Bola's request for a special use permit for the convenience store. So there was an Article 78 proceeding, which was resolved and settled between the town and Bola approximately two years ago. Part of that stipulation required us, of course, to come back in front of you and to incorporate by reference the facts and proceedings from the 1819 hearings, three in total, and the submissions included therewith as part of to this current application. So I would ask that the board please do so, consistent with the stipulation settlement. The application, and I'll just summarize, because again, I know the board is familiar, and there are certainly folks here, I've heard them talking in the audience, who want to be heard as it relates to this application. The application calls essentially for a raise and rebuild of the subject premises. Chris, if you could just sort of put that colorized site plan up there on the easel for everybody to see, that might be helpful.
Good evening. My appearance for the record, Chris Tartaglia from the firm of High Point Engineering. What was given out is just a copy of some exhibits that we have here on the boards, folks, just making it a little bit easier for you to see. It starts with an aerial photograph of the property. Second item is the item off to my right, which is the color site rendering. And then after that are various exhibits where we've done 3D comparative renderings of the existing property compared with the proposed redevelopment, showing what the facility will look like from various vantage points and all the roadways nearing the site.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Tartaglia can take you through those photo 3D sims after my presentation. So the site, which is approximately three quarters of an acre in area, or 33,057 square feet, it is at the southeast quadrant of Bay Shore Road and Manor Lane. It is currently zoned by Business 3, commensurate with and consistent with Isopropyl Town Code. There is frontage of approximately 200 feet of Bay Shore Road, 155 feet on Manor Lane, and about 215 feet on Howells Road. The applicant proposes to raise and rebuild the site. As part of the new development, there will be a 2,545 square foot convenience store situated at the eastern part of the property. And if I just move to the easel.
Do you have one you can turn around for the members of the community who are here?
Certainly do that.
Yeah, we certainly have a copy in front of us, right?
To the extent they can see, Mr. Chair, happy to do it.
Just point out again, the buffer, what you just showed us.
Yep. By the way, I'll just point out, I'm sure there are a number of folks here who were at the town board hearing back in November of last year. And that's the site plan that's in front of the sport tonight is consistent with the site plan that was reviewed and approved by the town board as part of Bola's special permit application for the rebuild of the gas station and to modify covenants on March 10th of this year. Aside from the convenience store, there will be a replacement canopy, which will be 82 by 32, or 2,604 square feet. That canopy will be perpendicular to Bay Shore Road, and it'll be about 700 square feet, actually smaller than the existing canopy. So the canopy itself will be less obtrusive than what exists today. Currently, there are five, I'm sorry, six multi-product fences on-site right now with 10 fueling positions. There will also be six under the new plan, and there will be 12 fueling positions. The curb cuts on Bay Shore Road will be maintained. However, the easternmost curb cut, which is closest to the eastern lot line of the premises, will be closed, and that curb cut will actually be moved westerly away from the adjacent residential parcel to the east. You also note, if you go to the site, there is a freestanding privately priced and ID sign along that eastern lot line. That, too, is coming down, and there will be a monument sign installed on-site along the Bay Shore Road frontage between the two curb cuts on Bay Shore Road. I'll also note, as part of the redevelopment plan, particularly on Bay Shore Road, and in conjunction with, I believe, Suffolk County DPW comment, those curb cuts are going to be right-in, right-out only. There will be signage indicating such, as well as no left turns back onto Bay Shore Road. So there will be a vast improvement in terms of traffic safety and circulation as to what exists today. Similarly, right now, there are two curb cuts on Manor Lane, or Manor Road, rather. The northerly curb cut is going to be closed, and the southerly curb cut will remain as a full movement curb cut. This board may recall during our discussions relative to the Manor Lane, particularly with parking stalls being located adjacent to Manor Lane, that the applicant proposes to install shrubbery, dense shrubbery and plantings, as well as a three-foot-high knee fence to further mitigate any headlight glare. There were our 18 parking spaces proposed. We're going to build out 15, and planning has asked that we land bank three of them, and we're happy to do so. As part of the redevelopment of this site, this site has a tremendous amount of green space. Where 20% of the site is required to be landscaped, the applicant's providing 37.3% or 12,339 square feet. So almost 40% of the site is going to be green space. In addition, where the town requires 50% of that landscaping to be in the front yard, the applicant will have 135.9% or 8,989 square feet. So the site itself will be substantially improved from an aesthetic and greener appearance as well, which will enhance the buffering from what exists today to the neighboring community. The applicant will be relocating the vacuum and air pumps to the Manor Lane side. In addition, the trash enclosure, which is currently along the eastern lot line, will be removed and relocated to the south lot line, so it is away from the adjacent residence to the east. And currently, right now, if you go to the site, there is a partial six-foot wide PVC fence that runs along the south lot line adjacent to Howells. We plan to extend that six-foot PVC fence to further provide buffering to the residents on the south side of Howells as well. Mechanicals will be roof-mounted and fully screened such that there will be no noise, and they will not be visible from view. Character of the area, as we know, and as in a topic of discussion before this board, is generally residential, north, south, east, and west. There is a small dentist office, which I will note, which exists directly across on the north side of the property, the north side of Bay Shore Road. To the southeast, about 800 feet or so to the southeast, you have a 7-Eleven, which will be, which operates at the moment as 24/7 use. And I hate to say the problematic Bay Shore Inn, which has been a point of, a topic of discussion both before this board as well as at the town board. One thing that I will note, and I think it's important to note, is when we were before this board previously, and consistent with the then-current use of the site, which is 24/7, the applicant was looking to operate at 24/7. That is not the case today. The applicant will be closing the site at night at 10:00 PM, and will be reopening at 5:00 PM. And that is consistent with the town board approval, which was granted, as I mentioned, on March 10th of this year, and is memorialized in a declaration of covenants and restrictions, which has been sent out to the county clerk's office for reporting. I wish I could say that I had the recorded CNRs back, but to get recorded documents in Suffolk County right now is four to six months from when you submit. We submitted that about two and a half months ago. So as soon as we have recorded documents, we will certainly provide that to the town. In addition, comment was made relative to site security, in part, in large part, again, because of issues that stem from the Bay Shore Inn. Subsequent to the November town board hearing, Bola, and I'll apologize now, I printed out a copy of the receipt, and of course conveniently left it on my desk, installed camera equipment and recording equipment on the site to provide further onsite security and to monitor the site on a 24/7 basis. So that has been done. In addition to which, Bola did reach out and meet with the Suffolk County Police Department to talk about some type of more permanent presence in the area, including dedicating an onsite parking space for Suffolk County PD use. So we take quite seriously, and I know this board is familiar with the Bola operation, what goes on in terms of safety and site maintenance and cleanliness. And again, that is something that Bola has taken seriously on this site and has made investment in the site to further secure the site. With me this evening is Chris Tartaglia from High Point Engineering, our project engineer. I'm going to ask Chris to just sort of briefly step up at this point. And Chris, if you would, just sort of give me a little run-through on the 3D visuals, which I think, you know, I've always said a picture is worth a thousand words, and contrasting and comparing, if you look at the package in front of you between 3D sims and what exists today, substantial, substantial upgrade to what's existing.
Thanks, David. Again, Chris Tartaglia from High Point. So kind of working two different directions here, folks. I hope you can bear with me. But I think one of the most telling features of the documents that I handed up to you would be just showing the board. So this is the view from Howells Lane. It should be either this, the last or the second to last in your package. I'll just turn it this way so the audience can see it. So what we're looking at here on the top is the current conditions. We call them the before conditions. We're looking basically northeast to the site from Howells Road. What we can see is a partial fence that discontinues far too short from the corner. We do see the very mature but deciduous trees that are located along that frontage. What we show in the after photo is essentially those same trees, but bolstered with that fence, also now coming across all the way to the corner, and also the evergreen plantings that will be located on the north side of that fence, that'll further grow and provide much more significant buffering than is out there today. We spoke with the folks at Bola who've operated the site for several years but didn't build it, and just wondered why that fence was not built all the way to the corner. I believe there was, they didn't really know, but the presumption is that perhaps it might have been further along at some point in time and was taken down or fell down due to a weather incident or something else. But suffice it to say, that fence will be replaced with a solid PVC fence and be kept in perfect repair in perpetuity. All of the other items that I forwarded up to the board just indicate the views from the other roadways. And as you can see, it's a very lush and well landscaped and attractive facility, which we think is very important to the community. And as David mentioned, that Bola takes that very seriously. They have four seasons landscaping, full-time landscaping crews that they employ that literally will re-landscape all of their sites in each of the four seasons and make sure that they're healthy and vibrant. Just to reiterate a couple of things that David said with regard to site access. So right now, there are four full movement curb cuts, two on each of the roadways. We're basically cutting the access in half. We're going to have one full movement curb cut, to point this out. On Manor Lane, it'll be moved south away from the intersection. And also, each of the curb cuts on Bay Shore Road will be, one will be one way in, and one will be one way out. They will both be right-in, right-out. So we've taken what's effectively eight movements into and out of the site and converted that only to four. And the application is currently under review by the Department of Public Works, but they've agreed with our access scheme. And we don't anticipate them taking away or looking to significantly modify those movements that I just mentioned. I think David's done a great job of the numbers, so I don't want to repeat what he said. I am here for any questions that the board or the public may have. Thank you.
I would just ask that you, I know you pointed the cards at us this way. Obviously, we have renderings up here. I don't think they saw what you were doing, members of the community. And then also, if you can put the renderings up as well from the other angles.
I know they're hard to see. I only have one easel, so I'm not really sure exactly how we're going to do this logistically. But certainly, they're up here if the folks want to come up and take a look.
Sure, if you can make them available.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask John Breslin to come. John is our real estate expert and appraiser with regard to this application tonight.
Good evening. Again, John Breslin, 44 Elm Street, Huntington, New York. I had been present at the original hearing and town board hearing. Simply, the applicant, as you know, has improved the plan. This is a longstanding gas station. Gas stations have evolved over the years from mom-and-pop repair shops to the current iteration, and now Bola is looking to install the convenience store, which has become commonplace in gas stations or on gas stations. They've taken the further step of limiting the hours and sprucing up it to make it fit more on this site in this community. I think they've done a wonderful job in providing that and substantial upgrade aesthetically over the existing conditions to make it fit on this site and in this area where you're budding closely residential neighbors. The conditions that have existed are already there. And this is just a change of the nature of the gas station to the current conditions with the benefit of an upgrade. So I believe that those upgrades will help mitigate the impacts on the nearby residences, but those conditions are already the major impact and locational factors that affect real estate that are already existing. This is not going to change that, except to help mitigate it with the explanations that Mr. Tartaglia explained to the site. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anything further?
Mr. Jerry, also have with me here tonight Amanda LaRosa from Stonefield Engineering. They are our traffic experts. But you know, for purposes, I think, of economy and time and based upon Mr. Tartaglia's testimony, particularly as it relates to site acts and current Suffolk County DPW review, we'll have Ms. LaRosa answer any questions that the board may have in terms of the, you know, traffic or their report. And for that matter, I'll just submit into the record, if you don't mind, copies of everyone's CV, as well as the real estate report prepared by Mr. Breslin and the traffic staff.
Thank you. We'll make them part of the record.
Will reserve any further comment or testimony pending questions or testimony from the public.
The report that you're submitting, is that different from the first one, or anything been changed on it, or is updated?
Which one, the traffic report?
Yeah, or is it the one we have already?
It's pretty much consistent with, but it was the one that was submitted to and accepted by the town board. So, yeah, but it's consistent with what was previously before the board.
All right. So we'll go to the public hearing, then we'll come back for comments. Robert Rens Jr.?
Board, Robert F. Rens Jr. reside at 1338 Manor Lane, Bay Shore. I'm on the west-south corner. I've lived there for 36 years, and I've watched the gas station grow and become what it is now. One of my beefs is that the proposal still has an exit, an entrance onto Manor Lane. Now, I witnessed, again, this weekend, standing on my hedges that blocked the headlights every day from the gas station, and also a sound buffer that I've put up, and I have it on both ends of my property. I've maintained that and mobile, Bola, since they've taken BOLA, since they've taken it over, they haven't, it's gone down. There used to be landscaping there, and the fence was extended all the way up. They had some environmental testing done. They took it down. It was never replaced. Now, the reason why I'm asking for the entrance is that anybody making a left-hand turn coming out to get, go south on Manor Lane has to cross that traffic that backs all the way up to make the left turn onto Bay Shore Road going, I guess that's northwest. Now, traffic cannot see the corner. The traffic device is not sufficient. It's a right-on red. People do not observe it. They turn automatically. So you don't know, and they're doing 35 miles an hour. And you're trying to come out and edge and make that left turn. You cut off the traffic going north because they have to allow, they have the traffic capture, you know, because they're blocking traffic to go through. And they edge out. And there was an accident about a week and a half ago at 10 o'clock with no traffic there between three cars. I have that on my phone. I will forward it to the board. You also had a problem with a PD being hit in the rear at 9:30 across the street from my house. That is the sixth accident going just up and down Manor Lane. You put Lowe's and that shopping center, you took care of everything south of that with all your planning boards and all your environmental, and nothing has been done. We need some kind of traffic control and to keep that traffic going on Bay Shore Road. The people are making shortcuts down the block. I watched two people pass each other, fighting over the double line to get down 600 feet over the weekend. Somebody's going to get killed. There's been six accidents. You have to cut down on the traffic on Manor Lane. It's only a short little block. Eight, there's eight houses on either side. Now, putting those BOLA market or whatever, yes, it, again, I'm not worried about that. You're selling, I just don't know where you're going to put the additional parking in that small area. Everybody's talking about green space. You know, if you don't maintain it, it looks like, you know, it looks like crap. That's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rens. I have Kyle Sarapiti.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Sarapiti. I live at 1334 Manor Lane. I am the next-door neighbor to Bob that just spoke. I'm talking about the convenience store, obviously, that we're pitching today. In location in relation to this BOLA market, I just want to speak that there is a BOLA market that's one mile west already at 1050 Udall Road. Then talking about convenience stores with gas stations, there's the 76 Exxon and the Shell on Bay Shore Road, .3 miles east to this location. And just convenience store only, there's a 711 600 feet east and another 711 .8 miles west of this location. So to add this would just be adding to the mess that we already have in this one location. Unfortunately, this location is surrounded by residential spaces only, except for that one dentist office. So 200 feet in every single direction, you have a house. All right. Location in relation to churches, schools, and daycares, you have Assembly of God Church in Bay Shore that supplies Happy Days Preschool from three to four years old, and a Christian school, kindergarten at fifth grade, and a summer day camp. That is .2 miles away, which is 900 feet. What I'm concerned here is you have a place that probably does not sell alcohol that will be established selling alcohol next to a church, close nearby a church, near bus stops. There's two bus stops on Manor Lane, one for the middle school and one for Mary J Clarkson. And that will be the alcohol sales, tobacco sales with children, the exposure to that, a possible offering, loitering at this area is a potential disaster for children in the neighborhood. And I have two that are going to be growing up in this neighborhood. I'd rather not see that. Criminal activity spikes up with any sort of alcohol sales in the area. There's a direct correlation. And what stinks about this area, pardon my language, I know stinks is not a curse, but there's multiple areas of egress because you have major highways. You have double line roads that are on the north and the south side, Manor Lane and Bay Shore Road. And you have the parkways. So major egress is for people to escape. Traffic, since the last time we spoke was November 18th, there's been a drunk driver accident that smashed into a parked Suffolk County police car that was across the street from Bob at 9:30 at night on March 7. There was another incident that took place a month after that, pure daylight, 10 o'clock in the morning. Good. Garbage I pick up on my on my property every single day. It's just going to increase with this location. I like this location with the way it is. I just want them to spruce it up because it's an in-and-out. I don't have anybody loitering at night or during the day. Sorry about anything else. And also, if you look at the rendering, please, right here, right, the one entrance and exit, when you add a convenience store, you add box trucks, commercial trucks, and delivery trucks. Everybody knows that Manor Lane is the cut-through to get from Sunrise Highway north, and that's where the trucks are going to be coming from because they can't come from Southern State Parkway, which is north. So everything's going to be coming south to north. And to get into that one location, it's going to cause a traffic jam. Fortunately for me, I took a picture today of just a line of people waiting at the red light without those box trucks and without those commercial trucks. Adding this to this community is going to hurt. Like I said, hopefully I spoke about everything I had. I don't mind them sprucing it up, making it look good, and updating. The convenience store is what bothers me for my children and my local neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer Beckensaw.
Hi. Jennifer Beckensaw, 1330 Manor Lane. I live right next to the gentleman Kyle that just spoke. I've been there now for going on almost 16 years. My question and concern was, I brought up at the last hearing about closing the egress on Manor Lane. That's the biggest concern. For all the points that the last two gentlemen made, that was something that was brought up by Angie at the end of the last meeting, Angie Carpenter, that she wanted a traffic study done to consider closing that altogether and putting up fencing and shrubbery along that west side of the property. This gentleman, I forgot what his name was, had just mentioned that the traffic study is basically the same one that was done last time. So that says to me that nothing was done at the request of Angie to consider closing that off totally. And I agree with Kyle with, you know, sprucing it up to make it look nicer than what it is now because it's horrible. But adding the convenience store is going to just increase the insane amount of trucks that we have coming up and down our block at all hours of the night. It's really becoming a problem. So that was all that I had to address to the board.
Thank you. Ralph, is it Remfetti?
How you doing, Ralph Remfetti? I'm at 1335 Thompson Drive, Bay Shore, New York. That's on the corner of Thompson and Howells, which is about a block from the gas station. I took some recent pictures today. I think you said BOLA has taken over this since 2018. Is that correct? Does anybody know?
Kelly, can you just repeat that?
I wanted to know if it was taken over since 2018, BOLA?
I don't know. We'll get the answer from the applicant afterwards.
Okay. Well, this is my point. The place looks like a dump. I don't know if anybody at this at this hearing has been by there to see it. We get to look at it every day. And what every other person that's come up here so far said about that curb cut being cut off in Manor Lane, I agree 100%. So I did take some pictures. If anybody would like to see them, I'd gladly like to show them to you, taken today. So my point is, if they took over in 2018 or whenever, they didn't bother to spruce it up. So they really didn't really want to do anything to help us. And like another gentleman just said before, there's a BOLA on Bay Shore Road. There's also one on Fifth Avenue, I think, in Howells. I'm not sure if that's Howells Road. They're definitely within like two miles of each other. So we need three BOLAs in the town of Isop or basically just Bay Shore. That's where it is. It's Bay Shore. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ellen Greenspan?
Hi. My name's Ellen Greenspan. I live at 386 Howells Road in Bay Shore, and I am exactly diagonal to the gas station. So if I walk to the end of my driveway, thank God I have high bushes, I walk to the end of my driveway, it's right there. First of all, I want to say thank you to the planning board for acknowledging the concerns of the constituents. After reading the new covenants and restrictions, it is clear that you heard us and validated what we expressed to you at previous meetings. But here we are again, four long years later, and neighbors still think the best result would be no convenience market. On page 20 of the petition complaint to the Supreme Court that BOLA made, they called the planning board's denial of the application arbitrary and capricious. Essence calling my concerns and those of the residents arbitrary and capricious. BOLA claims there is no expert evidence or data that supports the denial, that the denial is baseless. I would argue that there is no better expert than a person who lives right there, day in and day out. And what an insult to be dismissed as as being baseless. BOLA also claims there is no empirical evidence the store would adversely impact the community. I would say to that, look at the mound of evidence the neighbors have provided about quality of life issues already affecting them at previous meetings. That BOLA says the gas station has operated without incident is only more reason to leave it that way and not invite trouble. Even worse is that BOLA is advocating we need them to be the eyes and ears, that's page 13 of their, whatever that was called, to monitor our neighborhood with the presence of the store. That's laughable. No one is going to care like the people who live here. Am I going to call Mr. Altman at 2:00 AM if there is a robbery? But he's going to be the eyes and ears. Worst of all, BOLA is saying on page 15 of same document that convenience stores have become a ubiquitous and essential component to gasoline service stations. Ubiquitous, yes. Essential, no. Essential means absolutely necessary. It is called a convenience store for a reason. It is convenient. And like many conveniences, it brings additional problems. King Cullen is down the block from me. They are a necessity. Lastly, if despite all the protestations that the neighbors have made, and this building goes up, it would be disheartening if BOLA EM Realty then begins to chip away at the restrictions one by one, making the entire neighborhood impotent to hold on to the quality of their life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have. That anybody come in later wishes to be heard on this application. Not seeing anyone, I'm going to go to Ms. Woznick for a staff report. Can you just send the mic down to her?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning board recommended denial of this application in February of 2019 due to the impacts of the proposed convenience market. The applicant filed an Article 78 against the town, of which the Supreme Court sided with the town. And then the applicant offered to reduce the hours of operation for the gasoline service station. The planning board then agreed to a rehearing of the application for the convenience market. Tonight, the applicant is requesting approval of the special permit application for the convenience market, subject to the covenants and restrictions, which limit hours of operation from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and require plantings to mitigate headlight glare into nearby residences, along with other improvements which help mitigate possible negative impacts and improve the site overall. It is worthy to note, the original submission of this application included an accessory restaurant within the convenience market, but the applicant has since removed the restaurant from the proposed plans. Based on the comments heard this evening, planning recommends the board reserve decision to address any of those comments.
Thank you. Questions from the board. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, not so much a question, but more so comments. You know, I was concerned originally with the hours, and you did address that and cut the hours way back. The fencing on the one side where across the street where the woman would have the headlight shining in, you did address that also. And I am convinced that BOLA would landscape and have the nearly 40% landscaping and everything, and it would look a lot nicer. My concern still is on Manor Lane with the entrance and exit onto Manor Lane. I don't disagree with the residents that spoke tonight with that. I'd still, and I want to hear what my colleagues have to say about that. I think that's still something that maybe we should look at, hard to address.
Mr. Brown, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Chris Tartaglia to step up and address that comment because it was raised by the residents at the town board proceeding. The supervisor asked that we address it subsequent to the close of that proceeding. We did. And that was the last we heard from the town board prior to their approval. So I'm going to ask Chris to step up and offer some comment in that regard.
Thanks, David. So indeed, the supervisor did request that we look into closure of all access from Manor Lane. The answer that was given at that time was, you know, absolutely, we would look into it. But the issue here, and this planning board is very familiar with it, we have to get the gasoline tanker truck onto and off of the property. And with the restrictions that Suffolk County Department of Public Works will put and has put on the property with the right turn in, right turnout only entrances onto the main roadway, the problem we have is we can't get the truck in and out without that side door access. Again, as I indicated, we're right now on Manor. We have four, two uncontrolled, two-way, left in, left out, right out, any movement you can make on Manor Lane. We're reducing that to one curb cut furthest away from the intersection, which is in keeping with all good planning principles and traffic principles. But all that said, this town employs a traffic consultant who will significantly, has already looked at this, and will significantly vet this particular issue, and would be happy to take that forward with them to get their concurrence that the access plan that we have, which again, is approved by the Department of Public Works, but we will work with the town's traffic consultant to get their concurrence that what we've proposed is appropriate and indeed necessary. I hope that answers the question. Mr. Frigari?
Actually, looking at the the site plan, if you had access only from Bay Shore Road, you're exactly right. It would be difficult to get a tanker truck in there. But that doesn't stop us from or stop you from exploring the possibility of closing Manor Lane down to regular vehicular traffic and maybe gating the Manor Lane entrance so that it could be accessed via a tanker truck. So that entrance would only be used for fuel deliveries and that type.
Again, I think the best response I can give to you tonight is that we should continue to review this with the town's traffic. The experts, I won't sit here and say that I am the only expert whose opinion weighs in. I thought that won't be very well received. So again, I believe, I think the right answer here is when traffic issues come up before this board, that this board needs to rely on the traffic experts that they employ and pay. And I believe that's that's really the best way we can go. We'd like to work with them, I believe it would be L.K. McLean in this instance, to get their concurrence and any recommendations they have. If they say that, you know, perhaps closing the gate, personally, I believe that that creates some logistical headaches and issues. And when is the gate open? When is it closed? You know, those are, those are significant. You know, those are significantly different.
With today's technology, there's a way of having a gate that could be opened remotely or something like that. So there's many ways we can skin that cat.
Yeah.
And when it comes down to traffic engineers and traffic experts, yes, they are knowledgeable as far as traffic control and, you know, the ITE standards and all of that, but there's no one that knows this community better than the residents, and they know the problems that exist there. So it's incumbent upon this board to listen to what they have to say and do our best to address that. You know, there's a lot of good things with this application, and yet there are still a few sticking points to it.
We just don't want to create a situation that's in fact more dangerous than you're purporting to make it. Access from one roadway right in, right out only would probably necessitate people perhaps maybe making illegal left turns out of the exit, only curb cut. You know, people, it's hard to police people, they're going to go where they want to go. And again, I just would ask for the board's patience in us working with the traffic engineer employed by the town to assist us in either supporting or modifying the plan, whatever they deem appropriate. But I believe that's the proper path.
I'd also be interested in seeing Suffolk County DPW's comments relative to Bay Shore Road.
In fact, a comment letter just came out today that the town was copied on. It probably didn't make its way to the board, but they did indeed concur that right in, right out access was appropriate. They did request some minor modifications to those curb cuts, but they have, in effect with that letter, approved the access. And that is provided to the town, it's in the planning department as we speak.
Because we've found is that just signage, right in, right out, people don't always obey those signage. So you have to do things like tiered dropped exits, entrances, maybe some medians on Bay Shore Road to prevent people from making that illegal left-hand turn, those type of things to improve the safety.
Yeah, they have actually asked for the curb cuts to be directionalized with pointed curbs and things of that nature, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
So I would concur with both Mr. Brown and Mr. Frugari. Certainly, there's been improvements with the fencing, with the landscaping, agreement of the hours of operation, but Manor Lane is still a sticking point for me as well. But explain to me why the truck can't come in from Bay Shore Road and leave onto Bay Shore Road? Is it a site circulation problem with the truck itself?
So I apologize, I'm pointing this to the board so I can explain it. So we have to be here at the access point here. With the trucks coming in on Bay Shore Road, they're coming in through the entrance only curb cut, the tanks are located here at the, they would sit here and do the delivery facing south and then come back out and turn out onto Manor Lane. That's the way we envision the access to take place. With coming in from Bay Shore Road, there's really no location we can put the tanks other than literally under the canopy or in the pump islands themselves. And even if we could put the tanks under the canopy, then the truck is now working its way through the pump islands to get in and out and to fill the tanks, which that would be a safety hazard because the truck comes in during business hours. So it's problematic and it's challenging. We believe we've, with the restrictions on access, which are literally half of what is out there today, literally half of the movements in terms of in and out of this site are what is proposed. We believe that we've adequately addressed the traffic concerns, but again, we will fully vet this with the town's traffic consultant for sure.
Just, you brought the issue up, what are the delivery hours?
For the gasoline truck?
Well, solid gasoline trucks, but since you brought up delivery hours, let's talk everything.
Yes, the gasoline trucks come in on an as-needed basis. When the tanks are nearing their limit, then the trucks would come in. Obviously, the limitations of hours of operation now are from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So the delivery hours will be within that window of the open hours. As far as the other deliveries to the convenience store, I believe it was also mentioned in the call of the roll, there is not going to be any kind of a restaurant or a food service operation here. The deliveries are primarily going to be via the box truck variety. They are again on an as-needed basis. There'll be multiple vendors bringing deliveries in. So they're not set on a set schedule, but generally speaking, the desire would be to have them come during non-peak hours, which would be not during the morning or the afternoon or evening rush. And again, within the hours of operation between 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.
So I guess based on that, if we were to move forward with this, if we can agree on the Manor Lane issues, you would agree to covenants and restrictions that would maybe limit the hours of delivery for both the fuel as well as the convenience store? And then my other question to you is, the number of pump islands, are they going up? The number, or is it staying the same?
So there's six pump islands, there's six multi-product dispensers that are out there today, and we're proposing six. So there's the same number of pumps. However, two of those pumps are what are called single-sided pumps. So the double-sided pumps have fueling on either side. So there are 10 fueling positions today. There will be two additional with 12, but the same number of actual dispensers, still six.
And if you were to keep that at 10, would that help your site circulation for the truck to come in and get behind them and go back out on Bay Shore Road?
No.
You have that analysis, run that up if I ask to see something on that? I haven't seen your site circulation plan at all, so I'd like to see something on site circulation as to why there is a problem with the truck coming in on Bay Shore Road and going out on Bay Shore Road. And I'd also would like to see what Mr. Frugari recommended in terms of the gate going there or possibly a right in only on Manor Lane. But I'd like to explore other options from Manor Lane. Were there further questions? There was a question about when Bowler took the ownership of the property. Somebody asked 2018, do you know that answer? Okay, well, just to note for the neighbors' comments, that obviously, while they might have changed the name of the service station, they certainly did not improve the landscaping or any of the other aspects along the outside. Just to point it out, that being good neighbors starts on day one, not after we give you something. Is there further, are there further questions from the board? The applicant like to add anything further? Thank you. And also, the traffic study, if you can just highlight for us the differences when you, if you want to send the copy afterwards, just so I can... Just want to make sure it's been updated and it captures that and any additional accident data, maybe since you were last before us. Thank you. Mr. Frugari?
I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing and reserve decision on this application so that we can work out the issues that we discussed this evening.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Frugari to close the public hearing and reserve decision, second by Mr. Bruno, all in favor? Opposed? We are reserved. Thank you. Let me go to item number three on the agenda. Town board application, public hearing. Ilandia Motor Partners LLC, CZ 2022-012, northeast corner of Motor Parkway, County Route 67, and Blidenburg Road, Hop Hog. Applicant requests to change of zone from General Service D District to Industrial One District and a modification of covenants and restrictions with TC 3797 in order to construct a mini storage warehouse. Site plan modifications may be required as part of the application. Good evening to the applicant. Mr. Germano, if you're ready to go, we'll hold off. If not, I'm going to call item number 12, which is a quick one. So you tell me where you're at.
We're ready to go, Your Honor.
Okay, there you go.
For the applicant, Germano and Cahill by G. William Germano, Jr. Also present with me is Jaclyn Pronto of Key Civil Engineering. And for the applicant, Todd Buckbar. I will pass up to the board copies of our architectural elevation and all the materials, as well as the most recent placement. And for housekeeping purposes, I'd like to let the board know that an older version of the site plan was posted on the town's website. This is the most recent version. We will explain the difference in the two plans as we go forward with the presentation.
Thank you. We'll make your submissions part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you. This application is for a change of zone from GSD to Industrial One for the limited purpose of approximately 39-foot-high mini storage warehouse for the property located on the northeast corner of Motor Parkway and Blidenburg Road. The project consists of two separate buildings, each 60,000 square feet. They will function solely as storage contained inside the building. No outside storage, overnight parking of trucks or trailers. The application also requires a modification of covenants and restrictions, and from this board, a landscape buffer relaxation where eight and a half is provided and 25 is required, but we'll go through that and show the board that it is not that drastic. Also, just for the board's information, we will require a side yard setback variance from the zoning board where 44.7 feet is provided and 50 foot is required. The facility encompasses two tax lots containing just over four and a half acres of vacant land, vacant land with mature trees. There are neighbors, there's vacant land abutting to the east owned by Computer Associates, which is shown on the aerial. The Long Island Lighting Company, which has high tension wires to the north of the subject parcel. And to the north of the lighting company property is a three and a half acre parcel owned by the town. And I can just show the public here. Your site to the east is Computer Associates property, to the north is the lighting company property, to the north is that property, that property. Across Blidenburg Road to the west is vacant land also owned by Computer Associates. And then to the north of that is the town landfill. Now, south of our site, across, south on Motor Parkway, we have the Village of Ilandia Properties, approximately 60 acres is vacant office building, which is important information. There's an application submitted for a change of zone from office to industrial one on that site. And that application is scheduled to be heard next week before the village board. And then adjacent to that, there's the Cablevision Building and then another office warehouse on the corner of Motor Parkway and Blidenburg Road. The applicant to the contract then D, the owner of the site, happens to Computer Associates. There was a change of zone approved in 1990 from residential to GSD for office use. The offices were obviously never constructed and the site remained undeveloped. The applicant submitted a conceptual site plan prepared by Key Civil Engineering revised as of May 26, 2022. And I'll run briefly through a few points in that plan. The eastern tax lot, again, there are two tax lots. The easternmost tax lot shown in the site plan is showing undeveloped. It's a little over, it's about an acre and a quarter, and that will remain green. And that was at the encouragement of planning staff. The balance of the property will contain the two buildings, each 60,000 square feet, with a 20,000 square foot footprint. So the, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention and to the public that this easternmost tax lot will be a natural buffer between our property and the houses to the northeast on Millmey Avenue. There will be 450 units per building. The dimensions of each unit range from 5 by 5 to 10 by 30. There will be two loading areas located on the north elevation, not facing Motor Parkway. There will be ground-level drive-up storage units with access from the exterior, but the majority of the units will be located inside the building, which will be fully climate-controlled. A small sales office will be in western corner of the building, closest to Blidenburg Road. And this office will typically have up to two staff members present to rent the units and sell moving and storage items. Office hours would typically be between 9:00 and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 9:00 to 3:00 on Sunday. Storage access hours, which are controlled by the automatic gate system, would be between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., but that also could change depending on who the operator of the facility may be. Again, no outside storage and no overnight parking of trucks and trailers. At this point, I'd like to present Jaclyn Pronto from Key Civil Engineering to talk through the technical aspects of the site plan.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Jaclyn Pronto, Key Civil Engineering Principal at the firm located at 664 Blue Point Road, Holtsville, New York. As indicated, the project is located on the northeast corner of Motor Parkway and Blidenburg, which is a signalized intersection. We provide full access off Blidenburg, which is the main entrance for the facility where customers will come when they are looking to purchase a storage unit. There's a secondary access point on Motor Parkway, which is a right in, right out, and does also allow for a left turn in. We've corresponded with Suffolk County DPW and we've obtained their approval for that. And once we have final confirmation paperwork, we'll forward that on to the town, but we've already gone through access coordination with the county. The, both access points will be gated. The one off Motor Parkway is the secondary, and so customers with key cards and access permits will be able to use that, where the main entrance off Blidenburg will be open the day and during business hours for people to enter. As indicated, the current, the property is currently wooded and vacant, and to our north is the overhead wires for LIPA, and then beyond that is town parcel. The building footprints are 20,000 square foot. They are three stories, however, they're only 39 feet, and I highlight that because the town code does permit up to 60 foot on the three-story, so much closer to a two-story at 39-foot height. In addition to the buildings, 20,000 square foot, two of them, so the total FAR that we're providing here is 120,000 square feet on the property, which is 60.5% FAR. One is permitted with the superior architecture of which we plan, which we are providing. So we're 40% less than that code requirement in terms of our FAR. And maintaining about 300 feet of wooded area on the east end of the property as well. Overall, site landscaping required by the town is 25%. We're providing close to 60%, 58.57, about 117 square feet. 50% of that is required to be in the front, 50% of the 25% is required in the front yard. We have about 85.4% of our landscaping in the front yard. The north property line, north of us, is considered residential, and so we do require the 25-foot buffer to the residentially zoned property with stockade fence and evergreen planting. Our intent is to provide the evergreen planting and wood fencing. However, that buffer does vary. At the edge by Blidenburg, it is 25 foot, but it narrows as you head east and tapers down to about eight and a half feet. You may notice there's a little bit of a taper on the property as well, and that's kind of what's driving that varying width. Being that we have the overhead wires to our north and then the town parcel, we felt that it would be amenable to this board to relax that requirement. We are adhering to the 50-foot front yard buffer. We are adhering our front yard also to Blidenburg. We have 84.6-foot setback off Blidenburg. The side yard is considered the north property. Um, the side yard is considered the north property line. And again, because of the taper, we are going to, uh, require a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The fifty-foot side yard is a requirement. We provide a range of sixty to forty-four point seven foot. So in average, we meet it, but on the east end, uh, that building corner is forty-four point seven feet to the north property line. Um, in regard to parking, uh, there's three separate areas provided for parking on either ends of the building. Required by code is thirty parking stalls. We're currently providing thirty-five, including two handicap stalls. I think that concludes my presentation. I'm here for questions.
And I'd just like to point a couple of things out to the board that, um, the once the civil engineer spoke with DPW and her and discussed the ease, the access on Motor Parkway, we added the fork chop and the no left turn out. And that was the change in the site plan that is presented to you tonight versus the one that was posted on the town's website. Uh, we've also presented the architectural elevations and they were previously approved by Kelly Wosnick. Um, I had discussed the scene ours generally with planning staff. And while we don't have a draft proposed, nothing discussed orally has been unreasonable. Uh, so at this point, we are prepared to take any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment, then we'll come back for staff important questions. John Burke. Can I just ask you just to start, just to speak into the microphone, we'll get the questions. We're keeping a record.
Trying to figure out where my house is according to this. And where's your buildings stop right there? My concerns are between Jake's fifty-eight, the traffic, the garbage. Not that this is gonna bring a lot of garbage. The dump. I've been living here for twenty-seven years, the dump, the trucks in and out. When you leave Blydenburg Road, Millmere Avenue, make a left to go to Motor Parkway, there's only a left and a right. You can sit there with three trucks. No one can make a left, no one can make a right. It's horrible over there. The wildlife, not that you really care about it. The sound coming off Motor Parkway with the trees is a lot. Been dealing with a lot of stuff all these years with this. Dump is getting better. I don't see any reason why we build a street between the wildlife and this quietness and serenity of living on the street. Right on the expressway, you could hit expressway. Now you have Motor Parkway, you can cut down the streets and listen to this. I have the dump, I have the hotel next to me, he just planted everything. I got, it's quite tight. It's like, you're doing something over there now. It's like, are you trying to force me to move out of the neighborhood or not? That's the way I feel. I mean, I wasn't exactly, yeah, exactly how this is gonna work out tonight. There's a, there's something, but I I wish you really wouldn't build it because it's quiet over there. And it's getting less and less quiet as the years go on. You have the hotel, you're written down everything. Now we're, we're gonna see a back of, uh, that and a highway on top of that and the expressway. Listen to that. That's one of my biggest concerns. It was a quiet street and it sounds like it's not gonna be a quiet street anymore. I don't know what any of my neighbors around here right now, unfortunately, the whole city are coming. And one of those signs on Motor Parkway, so one, one sign says, be here the thirteenth, another sign says, the fourteenth. Maybe that's why no one's here. So I don't know if that was, uh, done with deliberately, probably not. I'm just upset about it. That's all. Quiet street. It sounds like it's not gonna be a quiet street anymore. Thank you very much. Give me your time.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have on this application. Did anyone else come in later, wish to be heard on it? Not seeing anyone. I'm going to turn to Mr. Colgan to give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As stated, this application proposes a mini storage warehouse facility on currently vacant land. Prior to this, the property had been the subject of a change of zone for an office use, which was approved back in nineteen ninety. Uh, the proposed industrial zoning is general, generally preferred away from residential areas with good highway access. While there is residential uses to the north, it is bounded by high tensioned power wires and a town-owned vacant parcel that would act as an extended buffer. In addition, the subject use is low in intensity and is not anticipated to generate much truck traffic or as much traffic as the office use would have. Uh, the conceptual site plan shows nearly sixty percent total landscaping and meets parking requirements. Uh, there's a tapered buffer that, uh, the applicant stated goes from approximately twenty-five feet to eight and a half feet. Which abouts, again, the power line, uh, parcel. A variance will be needed from the zoning board appeals for the portion of the eastern building that's in the fifty-foot residential setback. Uh, the buffer relaxation and variance appear somewhat reasonable as the use of butts to power lines and is further mitigated by the vacant town land. The building elevations comply with the criteria for, uh, having F A R. Greater than the point four-two in the code for a mini storage warehouse. And it will be outfitted with solar panels on the roof. Uh, the benefits of the proposal include preservation of a significant portion of the natural vegetation and the lower intensity of the proposed use. There are industrial uses in Ilandia Village to the south. Uh, so this proposal appears contextual in light of the prevailing character on this stretch of Motor Parkway.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Can I just, Sean, I know you spoke about it, just to point out, as of right today, they could put what there? Just for the neighbor, I want to point that out.
I was trying to pull up the site plan, but it's several thousand square feet of office space, which requires, it does require more parking and generally most office uses would generate more traffic than, uh, mini storage warehouse.
Just my point there was that this would be a less intensive use for the area. If they built as a right, an office building there, they would have much more traffic coming in and out and obviously more tenants in there than the rest. Further questions from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
Nothing further.
Is there a motion? Whoever has a microphone.
I'd like to make a motion that we close this public hearing and grant this application subject to the applicant and, uh, planning staff working out, uh, appropriate covenants and restrictions.
Motion by Mr. Frugari to close the public hearing and grant the application subject to uh, covenants restrictions being agreed to both by the town planning staff as well as the applicant. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Moriarty. All in favor? Opposition? Abstentions? The application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to go to item four on the agenda, which is Town Board Application Public Hearing, Central Islip Associates LLC, CZ two zero two two dash zero one five, northwest corner of Lowell Avenue and Eastview Drive, Central Islip. Applicant requests a modification of deed covenants and restrictions associated with TC five zero seven zero specifically to modify the affordable housing requirement outlined in the Lowell Avenue Revitalization Plan. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, Central Islip Associates LLC, Stephen Losquadro, six forty-nine Route twenty-five A, Rocky Point, New York. Unlike the, uh, application that will immediately follow, which we will make, which is item number five, uh, this particular application is extremely limited in scope uh, and does reflect uh, a request for a modification of deed covenants and restrictions. And specifically a request to modify the affordable housing requirement outlined in the Lowell Avenue Revitalization Plan. To explain the particulars of this application, which again, I repeat, i- is very narrow in, in what it seeks, I, I would call up at this time, Mr. Michael Pantillo, who is with me here and he's seated to my left and he is a principal of the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and the planning department. My name is Michael Pantillo. Give me my address. At twelve ninety-five Northern Boulevard, Manhasset, New York. Um, as, uh, Stephen had mentioned, uh, we're here tonight to, uh, respectfully request the review of our, uh, application for the modification of our covenants restrictions on the Foxgate property. To substitute the Lowell Avenue Revitalization Plan, which was part of the original satisfaction of affordable housing requirement with a modified plan, which would call for essentially two components. First would be the construction of twenty units of affordable housing, uh, which we are requesting be transferred to the Carlton Avenue property, which is the subject of the next application. Uh, and in addition to that, we have already posted a half a million dollars in cash and an escrow with the town for the purchase of a town-owned property on the corner of Cypress Avenue and Lowell Avenue, which will also be developed for affordable housing. So essentially that's the request. Uh, again, it is the substitution of the original Lowell Avenue Revitalization Plan, which unfortunately did not work. And this is to satisfy the affordable housing requirement in lieu of that plan. So I'm free to also answer any questions you may have with respect to that, uh, request.
Can I ask either the applicant or staff can define affordable housing? I know that's a term that's used that, that everybody has the full understanding of.
Uh, certainly, as far as I know, it, it's in compliance with the town's requirement for, um, current law requires ten percent of the total number of units to be built in any development are to be designated for workforce, also known as affordable housing, which is eighty percent of the area median income for Suffolk County.
Which is?
Current Suffolk A M. I. Is, I think, a hundred and eight thousand, so it would be eighty percent of that number.
Uh, yeah, I'm just pulling up the most recent numbers. This is as of last year, the numbers are likely higher. So the medium family income from Nassau Suffolk County for a family of four was approximately a hundred thirty thousand last year. So eighty percent of that is approximately a hundred one thousand. So that would be eligible for, um, a housing unit that could house four people. And our apartment complex will be a little less than that, but it's, it's geared at the eighties. It's not super low income. It's moderately low income.
Thank you. Just wanted that clarified on the record.
Sir.
Anything further from the applicant?
Yes, sir. I, I did just want to mention two things. Number one, I think just for completeness of the record and just for your knowledge, that, that has been significant collaboration and interaction with the office of the town attorney regarding the particulars of this and the transfer of the workforce slash affordable units. Also, if you would note that, um, there are two letters that we have presented. Now, one actually relates to the application that follows. But for the sake of convenience and mediancy, I had both letters presented at the same time. Each of the letters in support, A is in support of the application that will follow, but the first letter in particular also is presented in support of this particular application, number four. But both letters are in support of five as well.
Want to state who they're from, is that what you're doing, as a record?
For the record, the first letter which you'll see is from the Civic, Central Islip Civic Council. And that letter speaks in support of the modification of covenants and restrictions to allow the construction of twenty-eight affordable units of housing. That's from Joan Minetti, who is the Executive Director of the Central Islip Civic Council. That, of course, relates to this application. You will see, again, which we will get to in the next application, that the United Veterans Beacon House, specifically Mr. Frank Almalfatano, who is the C E O, has presented a letter in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to public hearing. We'll come back for a staff report and then for questions. Catherine Machin?
Good evening. My apologies that I don't actually know what the buffer zone is on this property. But I live on, uh, one Juniper Street, Central Islip, New York. My name's Catherine Machin. And I just wanted to talk that before you consider any modifications to this plan, uh, when they first were building Foxgate, I did apply, I did come to a town board meeting to talk about it. Thrilled to death that they were knocking down the buildings and building these, um, this whole, this whole home section. But I also asked that you please make sure that on the Lowell Avenue side, once again, we don't get forgotten. And I was assured that there was going to be a landscaped buffer zone that would look nice, you know, as you walk down Lowell Avenue. And that hasn't happened. And I've kinda, well, COVID happened two years, everything shut down. I can't remember when Foxgate started actually being occupied. But right now, if you go down, um, I'm not sure if it's Sundar, so I always get my, uh, streets wrong. But when you go on the northwest corner, as you go past Foxgate, it's beautiful. There's a beautiful fountain. There's a beginning of a black rail fence. They planted evergreens. Behind that, as you can go down towards the northwest corner of Lowell Avenue, all of a sudden the lawn isn't mowed where they planted those trees. It's overgrown. There are two construction trailers there. There is like a boundary fence where they have those cloth wind things, whatever you do to protect the wind. They're ragged and hanging down. So if you're gonna sell a piece of that property, that's great because you're gonna bring them down that gorgeous, beautiful clubhouse and everything. The minute you hit Lowell Avenue, from, uh, the gate on Cherry Street down to Elm, I mean, I don't think they were supposed to put a sidewalk in or anything. But they've done nothing. They have not replaced the fencing. There's the same old trees. It's, it's still a rusted fence. I have pictures. Right now, it doesn't look bad because it's summer. All the trees are in bloom. Everything looks great. But before you consider that, I would ask you to just please revisit what that's supposed to look like on the Lowell Avenue side. It's supposed to be Lowell Avenue revitalization. And believe me, I've lived here a long time. It's getting great. But this particular section, it's overgrown. It's the same trees from when the hospital is there that are falling down. And they need, it needs to be addressed. I have pictures too, like from between where the front of the, um, area is to Lowell Avenue. It's just a big, overgrown field. So before you consider that, could you please re-investigate what exactly they were supposed to do on that zone and on Lowell Avenue side? Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Kavanaugh?
I got one quick question. I know I want to speak on four, five and six. Do I get called up to each one? Okay. Debbie Kavanaugh, twenty-one Walnut Street, Central Islip, New York. I'm the president of the Central Islip Coalition of Good Neighbors. The Central Islip Coalition of Good Neighbors supports the Foxgate Homeowners Association on this project. We do not object to the twenty-eight units being moved over to the Vista project. However, I do feel the following. First of all, when the master plan was originally written, it was supposed to be, Foxgate was supposed to be a hundred percent homeowner occupied. Then they came back and they wanted to switch a hundred units to rental with the promise that they were going to flip up to two million dollars worth of foreclosed houses and resell, so on and so forth, which never happened. Granted, they settled with the town on a quarter million dollars on that particular issue. Far as I'm concerned, if the affordable is being put back into play, even if it's relocated onto the Vista project, I believe we should go back toward the original master plan set. It should all be homeowner occupied and not rental. It was changed to rental simply because they were going to flip the other side. And they didn't do it. So if they didn't do it and we are still gonna be required to do the twenty-eight homeowner occupied, even if we move it to the Vista side, which I don't have a problem with, I do feel they should be required to make it homeowner occupied as what it was in the original master plan because it was changed and then they failed to follow through. So if they have to go back to the homeowner, the affordable, then they should have to also go back to the homeowner occupied. We have enough rentals going into Central Islip right now. We are overloaded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh. Those are the only cards I have on this application. Did anybody come in later, wish to be heard on item number four? Is that Jamie Siegel?
Good evening, members of the board, planning staff, chairman. Thank you for taking the time tonight. Jamie Siegel, I am the president of the Foxgate Homeowners Association. We're in favor of this change in covenants and restriction. Also support the comments that both people have spoken about in terms of Foxgate has been really nice to the community. It's cleaned up that corner nicely, and I assume that when they're going to do the other portion, they will clean up that Lowell Avenue side. I just think with the pandemic, they haven't gotten quite to starting on that portion. I live directly across from it, in the first phase of Foxgate. So I've looked at it for six years, and I know that they're trying to work on that property. It's in litigation still, so I'm not sure where it's going, but we'll find out soon enough, I'm sure. Thank you, and we are looking forward to seeing Central Islip thrive.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you said you support both speakers?
No, I support, I feel what they're saying, and when I say I support it.
Thank you. Anyone else who wish to be heard on this application? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to turn to Mr. Colgan to give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated by the applicant, this application proposes to modify a covenant requiring the renovation of blighted properties around Lowell Avenue and Central Islip. The applicant tonight instead proposes to construct 28 units of affordable housing on the west side of Carlton Avenue to fulfill the affordability component for the Foxgate project. Prior to this, the property has been the subject of a change of zone for ownership multifamily in 2005 and for converting some of the ownership units to rental units in 2011. Working with the community, the applicant agreed to renovate blighted properties in the Lowell Avenue area in lieu of providing onsite affordable housing. The developer agreed to operate a revolving fund for a minimum of five years for said renovations for a total expenditure of $2 million. Several conversations were held with the applicant and the Long Island Housing Partnership around four years ago, and both had indicated that the revitalization plan was no longer viable. The staff generally supports onsite affordable housing, as proposals to provide offsite affordable housing have proved difficult to implement in recent history in other areas of the town. There does appear to be a credible opportunity to provide the required affordable units nearby on the west side of Carlton Avenue. However, the staff feels strict covenants should be in place to ensure that the affordable units do get built. The staff recommends the board reserve decision tonight to review those comments that we've heard and further evaluate the receiving site for the required affordable units.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Can I, I was not on the board when this first went through, so I don't know the history behind it, but explain to me how we got from $2 million to a legal settlement or we didn't spend the $2 million?
I'm happy to do so. It was quite an odyssey. So the original approval required 20% of the entire development be affordable housing. And so as the process and the economy and the world evolved, we were, basically after the crash of 2008, you couldn't get financing for condos. It was very, very difficult. Banks weren't lending. It was a financial crisis. Lehman went under. I went back to the town at the time, the planning commissioner, who was, I believe, Gene Murphy at the time, and we proposed converting half of the approval of 284 units to rental, because there was actually a market for rental and there wasn't much of a market for condominiums. After extensive negotiations and back and forth, we got approved, I think it was 2011, for 100 units of rental and 184 units of condominium. And as life is ironic, we ended up not building the rental first. We built 184 condominium units in Foxgate, which turned out to be a very successful, beautiful addition to the, to the Central Islip community. We have 184 wonderful families there living and enjoying the facility. As the process evolved, we ended up in litigation, which is why we didn't start it and to address the one comment about the improvements along Lowell. It just hasn't happened because construction hasn't started. So we have an approved site plan, which we've resubmitted for some minor modifications, just to bring it up to code, which is in planning for review. But all of it will be landscaped, all along Lowell Avenue. Improvements will be made, new fencing, new landscaping, et cetera. So that issue and that concern will be addressed. Somewhere along the line, I guess it was about 2012, 2013, we were approached, the concept came from Steve Flotteran, who was then a town council member, who said, Mike, we're having trouble with the Lowell Avenue neighborhood area. There's some blighted houses. What do you say? You guys eliminate building the affordable onsite and you move over to Lowell Avenue and you buy houses and effectively renovate them and flip them. And I thought immediately, Steve, tremendous idea. We love it. We are probably one of Long Island's largest affordable, or New York State's largest affordable housing developers. We were instrumental in redeveloping the South Bronx back in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and Harlem, you name it. We're all over New York State building affordable. So when I heard the idea, I thought it was great. Unfortunately, a little bit of time passed, and we engaged Long Island Housing Partnership as a partner to help us facilitate using this revolver fund to go onto Lowell Avenue and start buying houses. Well, it took a couple of months, but we figured out with our partners at Long Island Housing Partnership that we couldn't get control of the lots. And we went to Long Island Housing Partnership because of the strength of their organization within the county to see if there were any, you know, tax foreclosure lots, anything the county owned, anything the town owned, so we could get in, get control of those sites, renovate the homes, and help lift that neighborhood. But as I said, it became apparent very quickly, we couldn't do it. The lots weren't available. There was competition from investors buying lots. We couldn't get it to work. Unfortunately, time passed. We got engaged in building the 184 units, and we postponed dealing with the affordable housing issue until the last two years. And we, again, we are one of the largest affordable housing builders. We believe in workforce housing and affordable housing. We wanted to address the issue. And because the, and so we had four different condominium offering plans for Foxgate. There were four books we put together. Every single one of them indicated that the affordable was going to be built off-site. So more recently, we decided, well, we made a commitment to the homeowners of Foxgate, that those 184 families living there would not have the workforce housings, AKA affordable housing units, built on the 100-unit rental site right next door. So we approached the town, both planning department as well as the town attorney, and said, look, let's come up with a solution here. And during that time, I had gone to contract, and I'm still contract vendee on the Carlton Avenue property, and I came up with the concept, well, what if we just transfer them over? So they were originally supposed to be built, you know, offsite in Lowell Avenue. We couldn't make that work. Let's make a, let's make an alternative, a substantive deal here, and let me add them on top of the 10% requirement that exists for Carlton Avenue. Let me add those additional units. And so that's essentially the substitute plan. We're going to build 28 units, and in addition to that, the town attorney approached us in conjunction with the Central Islip Civic Council. There's a parcel that the town owns on the corner of Lowell and Cypress, and the town wanted to sell the property, and we were happy to purchase it. So we established a half a million dollar escrow, which is to this day sitting with the town. To close on that property, it's our intention to donate it to, most likely, the Central Islip Civic Council to develop some affordable housing on that site. In addition of that, we're going to build a 28, which we will add to the Carlton Avenue development. So that is the odyssey that got us here to submit this application, to honor the commitment we made to Foxgate homeowners, that it would be built offsite. But unfortunately, since we couldn't do it on Lowell, we're respectfully requesting that you consider our request to move it over to Carlton, and it will be folded into the 130 we're requesting at Carlton Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think you addressed the other question I was going to ask, which, there is a site plan that's been approved for Lowell Avenue side, just because you have not gotten around to construction yet, but the landscaping will...
Correct. Yeah. It was approved for five years. There's always all, we had to modify the site plan recently. That application is sitting with planning. It's been reviewed. We've already received two, three rounds of comments. And yes, we brought it up to date for code purposes, because the original approval went back five years ago. And so we've made those modifications, and they include a full landscaping plan, which was previously approved. It'll remain same plan. There were minor code issues, like with the sidewalks, which we had to increase, but that's all been completed and in planning for review. And as I said, we're about two or three rounds of comments in, and we're down to very, very fine details now.
Thank you. Further questions from the board? The applicant want to add anything further?
No, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to close this hearing and to reserve decision.
Mr. Brown to close the public hearing and reserve decision. Is there a second to that? Mr. Matamore? All in favor? Opposed? This application is reserved. It's on the table. I'm going to go to item five on the agenda, which is town board application, public hearing, Vista Acquisitions LLC, CZ2022-016, southwest corner of Carlton Avenue, County Route 17, and South Research Place, Central Islip. Applicant requests amendment of the master plan. Applicant seeks a change of zone from planned development district, sub-district educational campus to planned development district, sub-district retail service, residential, and office in order to construct a retail building, rehabilitate three buildings for a total of 24 residential units, construct 160 residential units, and construct a medical office building. A minor subdivision is also requested. Site plan modifications are also requested as part of the application.
Mr. Chairman, good evening again. Stephen LaSquadra on behalf of Vista Acquisitions LLC. As has been noted, the applicant seeks a change of zone specifically from PDEC to PDDRS and PDDMF. This application concerns a site that's approximately 13.6 acres inside. Inside, it's located on the west side of Carlton Avenue with a street address of 263 Carlton Avenue. I should note initially that the application is the result of significant collaboration with local community members and organizations, as well as the planning department, and it reflects a significant reduction in square footage on and overall use of the site. It eliminates from prior iterations of the plan a gas station, a convenience store, and car wash, as well as the elimination of a quick serve restaurant with a drive-through. The application, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is a mix of residential and commercial uses. There are 130 residential units proposed, 106 in the main building, which is before you in the elevations and drawings, which I'll get to in just a moment. We've provided copies for each board member, five in total, as well as 24 that are located in cottages. There are three cottages, and they will have eight residential units in each. In addition, there are two commercial pad sites, one for an ALDI, which you will see, and of course, one for a medical clinic. Let me just take you through just as to what they are, and they'll be explained in further detail by some of the professionals who are here with me, who will speak in furtherance of and support of the application. But the first item is an elevation of the main building. The second is a landscaping plan. The third is a site plan. The fourth is an elevation for the ALDI, and the fifth is an elevation for the medical clinic. All of these are in larger poster size, and they're presented such that you can see them and also the public who is here see them as well. There are the two letters. We've mentioned them, but for the purposes of record in this hearing, there's the letter from the Central Islip Council in support, as well as from the CEO of the United Veterans Beacon House, Mr. Frank Amalfitano. Cottages, I should note, will provide special needs housing, and specifically, there'll be a mix of veterans housing and also housing for individuals with autism. We think that this is very important in the overall context of the application, because it does provide, what I think we could all recognize, our very pressing needs for those two, two groups of individuals, those affected, and this does provide housing for them, and that will be in the cottages, which are the 24 units that I did mention to you. Finally, before I pass on to some of the professionals who are with me, I will note that they are as follows. Anthony Zalek, and he's an engineer with Holtzmarker Engineering. David Wartman, and David is the senior environmental manager at VHB. And Pat Lenahan, who is the director of transportation at VHB. What I'd like to do now is start with Tony, because Tony, the engineer with Holtzmarker, will just describe certain particulars and a certain color and overview with respect to the site plan itself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning board members. I'm Anthony Zalek with JR Holtzmarker, P E L L C Consulting Engineers, Veterans Memorial Highway, Grand Concombe, New York. Just to give a little more detail about the overall parcel, the existing parcel is made up of six parcels that are PDDEC educational campus, for the purposes of all of the public that's here. We use a lot of acronyms when we're dealing with all of these type of zone changes. One key thing to keep in mind that for, again, for public's purposes, this is a change of zone. It's not a site plan submission for final site plan. Sometimes people do get confused with those elements. So as a conceptual layout, the 13.63 acres is made up, or will be made up, of three new parcels, dissolving the six parcel lot lines of the interior parcels. So for, again, the purposes of logistics, parcels one, two, and three are from the south to the north. Parcel one is intended to be the medical office parcel, approximately 0.74 acres. The middle parcel, parcel two, for the new apartment building, and to also have the three cottages that are existing there reside on that middle parcel, parcel two, at 10.87 acres. The third parcel to the north is just on the south side of South Research Place, west side of Carlton Avenue, and that's allocated for the grocery store at 2.02 acres. So from the original conceptual plans that were submitted to town staff, we've had supplemental meetings, and we've addressed certain recommendations by the staff in modifying the plant layout to rotate the apartment building, being the largest building that will be on the site in the middle, rotate it so it's parallel or facing Carlton Avenue for its entranceway. We've modified the flow-through of the entirety of the parcel from north to south for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. We've added more sidewalk connectivity across the whole community for the three parcels. The apartment building originally did show an outside pool. There's a few additional amenities added as planning recommendations for a dog park, vegetable planting areas, potential bocce ball court, or something of the sorts like that. There's also building screenings for what will be the grade parking below the apartment building as two stories of apartment building that had grade parking below. So the request by planning was to add screenings for the parking area itself. There are two existing curb cuts on Carlton Avenue. Keep in mind that Carlton Avenue has two lanes flowing southerly as one direction, so the two curb cuts that exist there now will not necessarily remain in that exact location, but in a simulation to serve parcels one and parcel two. There's an additional curb cut that will be added on South Research Place that doesn't exist now, and that's for the intention of getting access to the grocery store, as well as continue for flow-through for the entirety of the parcel. We did meet with a fire department virtually at the time, early on in the process here, to understand their new largest fire truck requirements for turning radius and be able to navigate its way through this site. So we've accommodated that within, again, the roadways that you see. And again, as a conceptual plan, not a site plan submission. We have confirmed with water availability from Suffolk County Water Authority for the entire entirety of the site, also confirmed with Suffolk DPW for sewer availability as well. So these are the highlights to offer at this time. I'll pass this to the next person.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is David Wartman. I'm the Senior Environmental Manager for VHB with offices at 100 Motor Parkway in Hop Hock, New York. VHB was retained by the applicant to prepare an environmental assessment form and an expanded environmental assessment to conduct an evaluation of the potential environmental impacts of the proposed action that's before this board. All the materials that were prepared have been submitted to the town, and I understand are available for the board's consideration. I'd like to note that it's our expectation that the town board is likely to serve as the lead agency for the environmental review. I'd like to just offer a few brief statements regarding environmental impact, land use and zoning matters, as it relates to this board's consideration and ultimate recommendation to the town board. As I mentioned, a part one of a full environmental assessment form was submitted, along with an attachment for a detailed project description, and as well, an expanded environmental assessment report was prepared and submitted. A principal component of that expanded environmental assessment is a consistency analysis of this proposed project with the town board's 2005 finding statement. That followed a detailed environmental impact statement process, which was thorough and comprehensive in scope. The consistency analysis presented within the submitted expanded EA report considers every one of the impact topics that were presented in that finding statement, and concludes that the proposed action is consistent in virtually every way with the prior finding statement, with a few specific exceptions. Primarily, those few exceptions relate to the fact that this site would be established in a different use than was contemplated at that time. For those that are not familiar, the educational campus sub-district designation reflects the fact that at the time of the 2005 finding statement and master plan update, NYIT was originally expected to accommodate up to 10,000 students, 5,000 of which would reside at the campus there. And over time, as plans changed, the master plan was updated with it. Ultimately, shortly after that master plan update was adopted, NYIT began to reduce some of its operations based on market conditions, et cetera, and ultimately, NYIT has vacated that parcel and the rest of the EC or Educational Campus District. This is an application to develop a portion of that former campus that is underutilized, develop it in a way that involves the adaptive reuse of existing structures on the campus, including those three cottage buildings that were mentioned previously, to develop it also in a manner that is, you know, consistent with current market conditions and includes only uses that were already contemplated within the overall PDD. Also, this proposed action would redevelop in the site in a manner that's consistent with the relevant goals of the original 1989 master plan and the 2005 update, such as encouraging the development of diversified housing options and the redevelopment of underutilized land in the PDD, as well as other economic development-related goals. To assess the potential impacts of the ways in which this project differs from the prior findings, the expanded EA incorporates analyses to evaluate impacts related to zoning, land use, relevant land use plans and planning matters, water resource, including groundwater impacts, sewage and water service, stormwater runoff, and surface water, as well as traffic and parking. The results of these analyses, and again, these have been submitted for the board's consideration, indicate that the proposed zoning and the land use at the subject property would be consistent with the established pattern of development within the neighborhood and the overall PDD, and as well, the overall goals of the relevant land use plans. And ultimately concludes that no significant adverse environmental impacts would result, especially considering those previously analyzed and considered within the town board's 2005 finding statement. Patrick Lenehan is here to discuss some of the key aspects of the traffic impact study, which is a part of this analysis, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, but otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lenehan. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Patrick Lenehan, VHB Engineering, 100 Motor Parkway in Hop Hock. As Dave alluded to, VHB has performed a detailed traffic and parking study, which was submitted to the board as part of the expanded EA. This study was performed in accordance with standard traffic engineering practices and procedures, and the scope and form of that study was developed in consultation with the town's planning staff, the town's professional traffic consultant, as well as through discussions with Suffolk County Department of Public Works, as Suffolk County has jurisdiction over Carlton Avenue, County Road 17. So just in brief summary, I'll try not to bore you with too much. The traffic study looked at things that you're probably familiar with: traffic safety, site access, parking, future volumes and capacity. In regard to traffic operations, we looked at four intersections and the site driveways from North Research Drive at the north, every signalized intersection down to DPW Drive, Courthouse Place. The development of the site has been described as a mixed-use site with senior housing, a small medical facility, and an ALDI supermarket to serve the community. The site layout in terms of roadways and pedestrians provides a high level of interconnectivity. This is something that was discussed with town staff. There is a main roadway that passes through the site, that connects all the site elements, that will reduce traffic to a degree by allowing folks to move back and forth, and if they should choose to do so, there is also a well-developed system of pedestrian pathways through the site, and you can see that on the conceptual plan. In regard to site access, it was mentioned already, currently, the properties that make up the site have two access points on Carlton Avenue, CR 17. This project also proposes two. They will be right turns in and out due to the fact that a raised median exists on CR 17, which precludes left turns in or left turns out. In addition, we propose an access point on South Research away from CR 17. One of the critical things that we wanted to look at was that distance from CR 17 to make sure there were not any problems with queuing between our driveway and Carlton Avenue, and that worked out fine, I'm glad to tell you. Finally, there is a, ultimately, we added, again, based in discussions with the town, a connection through a town-owned piece of property south of the site that gets us to hop and drive by way of the rear of Courthouse Plaza. So in the end, two driveways on CR 17, one driveway on South Research, and a connection that gets us to a second signalized intersection on CR 17. So the access plan for the site is very well-developed. With regard to trip making, the traffic study looks in detail of what the potential effects on traffic operations of this specific proposal in the concept plan is. The highest trip generation happens to occur on Saturday. What we find when we look at what happens when we add the traffic to the roadway network is some small increases in delay, mostly on side-street approaches, as you would imagine, but nothing significant that jumps out that indicates that any mitigation is required. In regard to parking, the parking overall does fall short of town code by a small number of spaces, 34. There is data within the parking section of the traffic and parking study, which supports the shortfall and indicates that the parking will be more than sufficient. So that's the summary, and I appreciate the time to present. I can take questions now, or we can do what you've been doing and hear from the public, and I can come back up and answer any questions you have.
We've got a public hearing. We'll go to staff report. We'll come back with comments.
Thank you.
You have Paul Pedretti.
Paul Pedretti, 59A Chestnut Lane, Oakdale, New York. So I serve as chairman of the Board of Directors of an organization called Autism Communities. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that is dedicated to finding and implementing innovative housing solutions for young folks living with autism here on Long Island. And as you've heard referenced, the development team has expressed a willingness to work with us by virtue of allocating a limited number of units for our members to take advantage of in the affordable housing component of this project. So I'm going to speak in support of the project, but first, I thought I'd give you sort of a macro view as to why such housing, specific to this project, is so important and so desperately needed. So it seems these days, everybody knows somebody with autism, right? The reason for that is that every 11 minutes, a child is born and diagnosed with autism. The current numbers are one in every 54 people in the United States. So there's several million people living with autism in the U.S., and the numbers correspondingly relate, proportionally relate, to Long Island. Eighty-seven percent of those folks live with their parents, and this is an important factor in this, and will need affordable housing solutions of some kind. Many of those live with caregivers that are 60-year-old or older. All right, so this is by virtue of just the what I just said, that's not a sustainable model. The problem is, the one thing we all have in common is death and taxes, right? Those parents at some point are going to leave the earth, and what happens to those in, you know, the worst-case scenario is they become wards of the state. Not something you want. So Autism Communities has worked for years to provide solutions to this issue, should do so by partnering with developers like the applicant. In fact, we have already successfully implemented this model right here in the town of Islip. We have, over the past few years, facilitated several young people between the ages of 20 and 35 moving into their own apartments in complexes in Great River and Bay Shore. So it's already something that is up and running. We feel like it's very important to propagate this model. The basis of it is that the people who we support bring their supports and services with them. They make excellent tenants and neighbors. Their rent is in large part, if not fully, subsidized by the state of New York. So we fully support the project, but it goes deeper than just a construction project for us, for us and for our members and for our constituents, who really are your constituents too. It represents hope. So everybody that we're talking about, we think they all deserve an opportunity to have a home, and we certainly did, so they should have the opportunity for a home of their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Kavanaugh?
Debbie Kavanaugh, 24, Wall Street Centralized in New York, president of the Centralized Coalition. I was part of the original master plan revitalization committee, and I did sit on that committee with the community and the town. I just want to state that, number one, the coalition, along with the civic council, addressed the issue last year. We did write a joint letter on what our concerns were and what we did support. The Centralized Coalition does support the residential units, the construction of the 116 units, and we know that the medical building is grandfathered in under the New York Tech, since it was already on New York Tech property. We understand it's grandfathered in it, and we do support the medical building. We were happy to hear that the gas station is no longer part of the plan. I'm very happy to hear now PDQ is no longer part of the plan. The community is fine with a sit-down restaurant. We did not want a fast food restaurant, which we stated in the letter that the civic council and the coalition wrote jointly and submitted to the planning board. Now, I think you've got a copy from us. Okay? Our biggest concern right now is the ALDI supermarket, which was mixed review by the community. It's not so much that we object to having a supermarket come in. What we object to is that the developer is not following the setback regulations according to the master plan when it comes to the supermarket. The parking spaces are basically on top of the sidewalk, which is not that far from the street, which puts pedestrians in danger, and to me, puts the drivers on C17 in danger, County Road 17 in danger if a driver passes through the parking space and goes on to Carlton Avenue. So we don't object to the supermarket. We do object that the master plan specifically states what the setback needs to be, and that the developer, when it came to the supermarket, is not following it. It needs to be followed. And we expect that the town does the right thing and follows what the master plan states, because that's what the community agreed upon when we revitalized it and we wrote it, and you guys wrote it all out. And that needs to be done. So like I said, we are in support of the housing development that's going in on the property. We don't want to have a sit-down restaurant. The community, again, does object to any fast food restaurants. We do not want one. We're a medical building going in. We have mixed feelings, again, about the supermarket, and that's strictly because of the fact that the parking spaces are on top of the sidewalks, and they're not respecting the setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the things I have on this application. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Come on up.
Susan Pellegrino, 85, Deer Path Road, also a member of the Centralized Coalition of Good Neighbors. I just wanted to reiterate what Debbie had spoken about. We really appreciate the fact that the applicant has removed the gas station, the fast food restaurant. We are in favor of the housing, but in the original master plan, our major concern then and now is that we really want to maintain and respect the historical value of this corridor, and we don't want it to look like Jericho Turnpike or a strip center. We understand those other components are not there, so that will be eliminated. But the parking space is so close to the road, other than the safety factor, really just takes away from that, and so we really hope that you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I'm going to turn to Mr. Colgan for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application proposes the redevelopment of approximately 13 acres of the former Central ISOP Psychiatric Center for a mix of medical office, residential, and retail uses. Excuse me. The buildings were most recently occupied by the New York State Institute of Technology. The master plan update back in 2005 acknowledged the declining enrollment of NYIT and the increased need for diversified housing. NYIT is effectively leaving the area and has been actively selling the property that it owns. This includes the Sunburst Buildings, which have become the Hudson Place Apartments, and the Belmont Property across Carlton Avenue from the subject property. The The proposed multifamily development is in direct response to these trends. The cottages, as stated by the applicant, are proposed to be renovated into eight units each and marketed towards groups that need assistance. A bus stop is proposed behind the units for convenient shuttle access. The applicant will be required to provide 13 affordable units onsite in addition to the applicant is also proposing to provide the 10% affordable units that would have been required for the Foxgate project. So that includes in additional 28 affordable units, where I believe approximately 38 units overall onsite. The proposed medical office would relocate an existing clinic. The proposed Aldi would provide a full-scale supermarket, which currently does not exist in the PDD. Both of these are essential uses that the state believes warrant consideration, given the recent growth in this area. The proposal supports several goals of the master plan. It's supporting the town's revitalization efforts, increasing the town's tax base, complements the mix of use of retail, commercial, and recreation uses that have been developed in the PDD, and also incorporates reuse of some of the existing structures. The proposal will economically benefit the local businesses and will be a beneficial element towards revitalizing downtown Central ISOP, particularly in light of the downtown revitalization initiative with New York State. Traffic is currently being reviewed by the town's traffic consultant, and those comments will be forwarded to the board once they are received by staff. The medical office parcel will need a parking relaxation, though the applicant will be adding parking spots to the municipal lot to the west, which should accommodate that use's parking demand. The senior multifamily development will need a height variance for exceeding 35 feet. This is driven by the desire to screen onsite parking and provide the onsite amenities for the tenants. The staff recommends that the proposed senior multifamily building be modified so that the parking lot entrances, or most of them anyway, could face away from Carlton Avenue. Two of the cottages may require variance for insufficient setback from Carlton Avenue. However, these are pre-existing buildings. Preservation will maintain the historic nature and character of the area, which is a key component of the master plan. The board may wish to consider eliminating the driveway and parking in front of the middle college, as that detracts from the landscape look, and appears that access and parking may not be necessary. The supermarket parcel will need a onsite parking relaxation of about 20% and relief from the 67-feet front yard landscaping requirement. There is otherwise an abundance of landscaping, and the placement of the new structures would comply with the master plan. The staff is concerned about the dead-end aisle in front of the proposed Aldi supermarket, as that is a safety issue with some motorists having to turn around while other motorists and pedestrian activity are occurring in that area of the parking lot. With regards to architecture, the staff recommends that the new building incorporate brick and some architectural elements from the existing cottages to provide a contextual look for this area. The engineering division will need a vehicle movement plan and additional dimensions laid out on the site plan to identify any other relief that this board may need to grant, as well as showing the placement of all refuse enclosures. Other variances may be needed from the proposed property lines between the three properties, but again, we would need more detailed information just to detail those because some of those might fall under the planning board's purview to move this application forward. Given the complexity of the project and the other concerns raised tonight, the staff recommends the board reserve decision.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Yes. I'm going to pick up right where Mr. Colgan left off and talk about just the view from Carlton Avenue. I don't know what the traffic count is that travels Carlton Avenue, but every time I drive down Carlton Avenue, I look at those cottages for years and years, and they're beautiful and that we do want them. They're a very important part of the community, and we want to keep them, and I really do appreciate the fact that you guys, the applicant, wants to do the same. I'm very concerned about the center cottage with the parking out front. When I drive down Carlton Avenue, I don't want to see a parking lot in front of the third cottage. I just want to see grass and have the site view from the curb straight back to the cottages that we have now. Also, I have the same feeling too with the Aldis. I wish you could do some sort of thing, like a mirror image with the parking and put it behind and have some sort of elevation views from Aldi that would tie into the cottages and the new development that you're doing. Because I just don't like the parking up against the curb, and I just don't think it's a good, good way of doing the parking there. And I don't want to see it. This is one of the largest parcels left, the last piece of the puzzle, one of the last, along the Central ISOP corridor there, and we really want to make sure that we have this thing right. So those are my concerns, and I wish you would address them.
Yes, thank you. I think Mr. Quintillo would like to be able to address those concerns particularly.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Yeah, I'm happy to address them. Now, this has been extensive. We've been working on the site plan for two years. I personally did probably the most extensive community outreach that I've done in any development in 35 years, met with every stakeholder group, et cetera. In fact, the addition of the supermarket was the result of comments I heard regularly from the community, "We don't have a supermarket." We contacted no less than 50 different supermarket companies, and we were able to secure Aldi for this location. The challenge is, when you're dealing with large chains that operate most supermarkets these days, they have a set design that they want. It's similar to, you know, to, you name it, quick-serve restaurants, et cetera, sit-down restaurants. You go to an Applebee's, you go to other companies. This is what they do, and this reflects the plan that Aldi wants with the layout of the parking. We modified the plan as much as possible to slide the Aldi and the parking back, and if you can look at the board that we just put up with the landscape buffer, which you also have a copy of, we're going to landscape the parking on that corner. But short of the number of spaces, short of that design, we would lose Aldi. And you'll find any of the major supermarket operators, they pull a set of plans out of the drawer, they have prototype facilities that they want, and we did our best, because originally, the parking was right up against the sidewalk. This has, I think, a 20-foot setback minimum, which will all be landscaped and will put additional landscaping to screen the cars. So the problem with flipping it and throwing the parking in the back, Mr. Board Member, is there's no way to safely access for cars to come in to do their shopping if we throw the parking in the back. We can't, we'd have to pull the building up front. And I don't want a knock-down cottage A. I want to keep it because I agree with you. I think those cottages are beautiful, and I've probably also built the most historic restorations of any developer on Long Island. I've personally constructed 39 buildings. I've renovated the National Register of Historic Buildings, going back to buildings from the War of 1812, I did. We're going to very thoughtfully renovate those cottages. They're going to come out beautiful. And the reason for the parking, because we did note the planning department's request to eliminate the parking in front of Cottage B, the reason we kept it is for the special needs folks. We're going to be housing disabled vets, we're going to be housing adult children with autism, and in the dead of winter, it's really not fair to ask a disabled vet to go all the way around, because you have to understand, with respect to the cottages, we're renovating them to the existing, they were originally physicians' cottages, and we're renovating them to meet the eight units that are currently designed in the buildings. We're going to just restore those eight units. Four of the entrances are in the front of the buildings, four are in the back. There's no way with the buildings to get all the eight entrances in the rear. So we wanted to keep at least some parking, and we obviously picked Cottage B because it's the furthest back, so that we wouldn't be asking the vets and the autism folks that they had to walk all the way around the building in the dead of winter. We've got six great months here, we've got six lousy months of weather here, it gets cold, and so we felt that that was the logical location. Originally, we had parking across all three buildings, but we eliminated it in front of Cottage A and Cottage C, and we just maimed the parking in front of Cottage B.
All right. On A, B, and C, the three cottages, two of them don't have parking in front, and they all have eight units in them, correct?
Correct.
So what's the difference between the parking in the rear on A and C compared to B?
We can assign the parking spaces that are in front of B for the four units, okay, in B that access the front, and the four units on the other two buildings in the front. We won't allow the people that can access B from the back to park in the front. We can restrict it and make that parking in the front of B for the, what would be 4A12, that access from the front of A, B, and C.
Go to Mr. Bruno and then Mr. Frigari.
I can very much appreciate the keeping of the cottages. Obviously, you've mentioned your love for historic, and we had the last speaker from the neighborhood talked about this corridor. My problem with this is the main building. I have no problem with the use, but I don't think that this main building takes on the same character as the rest of this area, nor going down Carlton Avenue. I would say that it's much more congested as a building. The parking is under the building. It doesn't use, and I'm not saying that this building has to be a replica of other things around, because I don't think it does, but by the same token, it looks totally foreign to me as compared to all the other buildings in that area. If you stand on the site, I visited the site. If you stand on the site, look across the street, look around, and I don't feel the campus feeling from this building. This is much more designed, in my opinion, like it was going on an infill lot than it's going a campus location. So in general, my problems with that overall building, I just don't think it fits right now contextually with the site.
Well, as they say, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, okay? I mean, when IMPEI built the glass triangle in front of the Louvre Museum in Paris, there was, you know, originally outrage, and now everybody's come to love it. I am someone who believes you want to introduce some other architectural style, because otherwise everything looks the same. Personally, I think it's a beautiful building. I like the design. We originally had a catty corner, now it faces, so there's less elevation actually facing Carlton Avenue. And with respect to the elements, in terms of the materials used, if we want to substitute the shingle look for brick, I would direct you, that's easily done. We built the clubhouse at Foxgate because we were requested by the community to make it look like the old firehouse that was on the property, and we built it to look like the firehouse, and we used brick. I can change the element in the front to be brick, if you want to see all brick. I haven't heard that comment, but, you know, again, if the thinking is change it to look like brick, we can make that accommodation.
For me, it's a little more that it's yes, but I'm not asking you to change it to brick. I don't want to specifically tell you what to do because all I'm doing is reacting to what I see, and what I see looks extremely congested, okay? It does not feel like a campus building. Simply put, it will certainly overpower the cottages, okay? It lacks the sensitivity that I, it's interesting, I think the sensitivity that you're using with the cottages is not done here. This is almost, to me, when I look at the elevation, it looks like a totally different project than the three little buildings that go next to it. So that's really my feeling about it, is it's contextual, and I also have to tell you, I can't recall many places, I don't think there are many, in the town of Islip where we park under buildings, okay? So that's not generally a campus or suburban way of approaching things, and it's certainly not common along this stretch. Even though there are some very large and high buildings, none of them are parked under. So I have to tell you, it's just an overall feeling of this does not seem consistent to me with the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, I think it's difficult for you to understand the length of the setback because that building is pushed back. Certainly, if we want to eliminate some of the, if we want to eliminate the, we can push the building a little further back. Of course, it's going to probably impinge on a setback on the northwest corner, but I think this building is set way, way back. In fact, it's set further back than the existing West Hall is. So we're pushing it way further back in terms of the setback. The areas in front are all extensively landscaped, so I don't think this is going to result in your concern that it's going to look overwhelming on the site. With respect to the parking, it was my choice to put the parking under the building at greater expense. Why? Because it saves all that parking, being surface parking surrounding the building, similar to the rental project that Farrell did. That's all surface parking. That takes up a lot of area. This is going to cost more to put it under the building. It achieves two things. It creates more landscaped area by tucking it under the building, and secondly, it's better for senior citizens in the dead of winter also that they don't have to walk from uncovered parking to their apartment entrance. They can be fully covered. They don't have to clean the snow off the cars. So it serves two functions. One, practically speaking, okay, it's a benefit to the seniors living in the building, and secondly, practically speaking, it eliminates all that other surface area and creates more landscaped area. So that's what I thought the benefit was, which is why I chose to head in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Frigari.
I just wanted a clarification on the cottages, going back to what Mr. Brown was saying earlier about the parking in front of or around Cottage B. And just so that I understand it, the reasoning for keeping the parking adjacent to the buildings around Cottage B is because that's the building that's going to house special needs, the autism and the veterans?
We're going to house the special needs in all three cottages.
All three, okay.
Right. Now, not everybody's going to be disabled, okay? Some people will be able to walk fine, but there will be a number of disabled out of that 24-unit population of apartments. Some of them will be wheelchair walkers, you name it, and so I wanted to provide some parking for those folks, okay, so they can access the front of their apartment, whether it's A, B, or C. It's a lot closer, it's a shorter walk, or, you know, wheelchair run for them.
Okay. So the ones with the greater needs will be in Building Cottage B?
Well, we'll start with B, and if we have some more and they expand into A and C, we'll designate the parking in front of B. Any additional spaces, they will be given so they have a shorter walk.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an observation, a comment. Tying back to the application we heard earlier, where you were asking that the affordable requirement from the Fox view be moved onto this site. I just want to make it clear that it's been, what, 12, 13 years since that affordability obligation first arose, so, and I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, if we don't get it locked into this site, and I'm not opposing that, but if we do move it onto the site, I want some clear assurances that those units get built. I'm concerned there's a little bit of, I'm not pointing any fingers, but there's a little bit of, you know, musical chairs where the obligation is that we're on Plan C right now, and I'm not going to be supportive of Plan C unless I can get comfortable if there's no Plan D or Plan E in the future. So I want to see some covenants that tie CFOs with respect to this site, to the affordable piece as well, to ensure that those units do get built here. So that's just my comment. I'd be generally supportive. I think there's a lot of good things with this application. Obviously, some issues need to be worked out, but I want to make clear the affordable piece really does need to get addressed here, and it's a significant piece. It's 40-plus units on this site, based on the 29 plus 14 that have to be built now.
Yeah, it's 28 13, and I agree with your comment. We are not looking, we want to get this done. We, again, I'm one of the larger affordable housing developers in New York State, and I would tell you, we're committed to doing it, and I would say two things. One, there's going to be covenants and restrictions that are going to go with the property, so that's going to require us to do it. And secondly, I would recommend you contact the town attorney because we have had discussions about what other collateral, if you will, will be available to ensure that they get built.
And I understand that, but from an equity perspective, we're imposing these same obligations on every other developer building this type of housing, and we require it to be built at the time COs are issued. So I understand there was some unusual circumstances here, some plans that were put in place sometime. It sounds like there was a suggestion of an elected official. I understand that happens, but, you know, we're imposing these obligations on all the other developers building very similar housing. Very few of them come back to us with this kind of approach, so I don't want to start setting the precedent that we're supporting moving affordability components on a regular basis without making sure that we do have sort of an end point at which the housing actually gets delivered. As I said earlier, you mentioned this Foxgate project goes back to 2008. I know there's a lot of stuff that's happened financially since then. I know there's a lot of stuff that's happened financially since then, but these are longstanding obligations. The units still are not built. We're hoping now that in two years, they will be built, but a lot of things happened. There's a recession looming around the corner now, and I don't want to be hearing that they're coming back in three years saying, we couldn't build the affordable piece, because it'd have to be all market rate, that's the only thing my bank would support, and then we're back to Plan D or Plan E. So that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Moriarty, the office of the town attorney actually brought up to us proactively your concern, and has indicated to us that what comes out of this, should in fact it move forward, and everyone collectively believe that that is the way in which it would go, that that would be addressed and in fact ensured by what they intend to put in place.
Are there further questions from the board? The applicant, anything further?
No, sir, but thank you again.
Thank you.
I just want to add to it, I, you know, I've met with the--
Yes, thank you.
I've met with the applicant on this. The community did bring some issues to my attention, which were the gas station as well as the fast food, and I thank the applicant for making those changes and removing that from what they presented to us tonight. I do agree with some of the comments, so I think we just need to look at that site plan. We want to preserve Carlton Avenue the way it is as much as possible, so we can go back and look at what can be done there in terms of the parking and how it's currently set up. That being said, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Moriarty.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and reserve decision this evening, giving planning staff the opportunity to work through some of these issues with the applicant.
Thank you. It's motion by Mr. Moriarty to close the public hearing and reserve decision. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Matamore, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, we're reserved. Thank you. Item six on the agenda, Site Plan Modification Decision Item, Central ISF Fire District, SP 2020-054, southwest corner of Lowell Avenue and Eastview Drive, Central Islip, zero Eastview Drive. Applicant requests a parking determination and permission to locate overhead doors facing the street in connection with the Central ISF Fire Substation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. My name is Edward H. McCarthy. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ingram and Smith, LLP. We represent the Central ISF Fire District. My office is located at 150 Motor Parkway, Hop Dog, New York, 11788. And speaking of fire stations, we represent a fire station and a fire district in this area, and pursuant to the 2005 master plan that has been referenced by the last two applicants and by the planning representatives of this board, that 2005 master plan called for the construction of a substation to essentially service and protect life and limb within the southern district of Central Islip. So we have been working for the better part of 20 years. This was a project that was spearheaded and envisioned by the great Gene Murphy of the Planning Department. He took an active role in interfacing with various commissioners of the Central ISF Fire District to see the completion of a substation. As this board is well aware, there has been a repurposing and a revitalization of the southern portion of the Central Islip Fire District. By our count, approximately 1,500 new living units have propped into existence since approximately 2006, not even to reference or to mention the commercial expansion of that area. So we have been in a 20-year process of trying to construct a substation. We have partnered with governors of this state. We have sought special legislation to permit the construction of a substation on a piece of property that was originally deemed to be restricted for educational purposes. In 2013, the Town Board of the Town of Islip supported the substation through a municipal home rule message, and we have essentially, we're at the end, hopefully, of the line of really servicing and providing alternate protection to the residents and commercial property owners of the southern portion of the Central ISF Fire District. So before you tonight, we have an application in which we are seeking relaxation, specifically the intrinsic design of any fire substation or firehouse requires overhead doors to face streets. So the contemplated substation that has been submitted to the town currently has five overhead bay doors, three of which will face Eastview Drive, two of which will face Lowell Avenue. So we expect requesting from this board relaxation of the town code requirement overhead doors or overhead bay doors face a front street or front yard. That's number one. And we're also looking, secondly, for parking determination. I have the chairman of the Central ISF Fire District with me tonight, Mr. Chuck Doyle, who can speak to the fact that the 39 parking spaces represented on the most recent design will adequately service and house any anticipated volunteer response on any type of emergency call at the new substation. So that's our application for the board tonight.
Thank you. I normally go to a staff report, but it's a decision item. I do have Ms. Kavanaugh here for behalf of the community. Did you want to say something? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This PDD EC zone, two-acre parcel, is currently vacant. On April 23, 2013, the Town Board opted a home rule resolution in support of special legislation by the New York State Legislature to authorize the conveyance of this property to the Central ISF Fire District for the construction of a fire department substation of approximately 7,000 square feet. A subsequent Town Board resolution, which was passed on March 8, 2022, was to increase the size of that substation to a maximum 11,750 square feet. The request before the board tonight, which is standard for all fire stations, is a parking determination and permission to locate overhead doors facing the street. The fire commissioner is here tonight to state on the record that the amount of stalls being provided for the property is adequate for their needs, and this is also in line with prior fire stations that have been before this board. In terms of the overhead doors, the building is centrally located on the property. Three will be facing Eastview Drive and two facing Lowell Avenue. Lowell Avenue has a conservation easement for the preservation of natural buffer along the entire frontage for everything other than the curb cut itself, and the doors facing Eastview Drive should not have a negative impact and are necessary for the operation of the substation. So based on this, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Just one question. The substation is, the fire substation and training rooms is not a rental or facility that will be rented out for the community for perfect? That's my only question. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the application.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to grant the application. Is there a second? By Mr. Frigari, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions, grant. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seven on the agenda, Site Plan Modification Decision Item, Michael Genosa, SP 2021-045, northwest corner of Central Avenue and Joshua's Path, New York State Route 111, Hop Dog, three Central Avenue. Applicant requests parking relaxation and a landscaping relaxation along Central Avenue in connection with construction of an 8,740-square-foot two-story industrial building and related site improvements. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here with, my name is Mark Owen. I'm with R&amp;W Engineers. We're the site engineer for the applicant, Mr. Genosa, who's with me tonight. The application in front of you is for an 8,470-square-foot industrial building, includes 7,470 square feet of warehouse and mezzanine space, along with 1,000 square feet of office space. The building is intended for Mr. Genosa's personal business. He is a pool contractor. He intends to use the building, operate his business. He's also a resident of the Islip. We have addressed a few rounds of comments from the engineering division, with a few meetings with the engineering division to resolve a few issues. The two items which we are here tonight seeking relaxations for, one is a single parking stall relaxation, 13 parking stalls in lieu of the required 14, as well as a two-and-a-half-foot landscape relaxation along the front yard, five-and-a-half feet proposed, in lieu of the eight foot required. Currently, the lot located on the corner of Central Avenue and Joshua's Path, Route 111 and Hop Dog, is a vacant lot. The property will be furnished with plenty of landscaping. I think it'll be a nice addition to the area, commercial area. Happy to answer your questions. The applicant did receive a copy of the planning staff's recommended conditions, and he has no objections.
I'm going to go to Mr. Gonzalez for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This industrial one-zone property is currently unimproved. It has had several attempts dating back to 2002 for development of an industrial building. However, the proposals were not met with support by staff. ZBA 257-02 was denied for front yard setback, zero rear yard setback and excessive FAR. ZBA 88305 was dismissed without prejudice for zero side yard setbacks. However, more recently, ZBA 495-21 granted lot with side yard and front yard setback relief for the proposed building. As stated by the applicant, this project has been through a few reviews by the engineering division, and the layout and configuration of the operation has changed. Originally, overhead doors were to face Central Avenue. However, after meetings with the applicant's team, the planning commissioner, traffic, safety, and engineering, those doors have now been eliminated, and the loading docks are now on the west side of the building to accommodate proper sidewalk and aisle widths facing Central Avenue. Only five-and-a-half feet of landscaping instead of the required eight is being provided, and a minor one-stall parking relaxation is also required. As these are relatively minor requests and the overhead doors have been removed from the proposal for Central Avenue, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
No, not unless there's any questions.
Is there a motion? Go to Mr. Matamore. There we go. Just give him a microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would move to close the hearing and grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions as worked out with staff.
Thank you. Mr. Matamore, motion to close the hearing and grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions, applications granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item eight on the agenda, Site Plan Modification Decision Item, Michael Matone, SP 2022-008, east side of Park Avenue, 547 feet south of Union Boulevard, County Route 50, Bay Shore 41-45 Park Avenue. Applicant requests parking and landscaping relaxations in connection with the change of use of an existing office building to a medical office.
Good evening for the applicant, Brian Kennedy, the law firm of Fortelli, Deegan, Pirano, offices at 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite 1010, Uniondale, New York. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The applicant was before this board on May 4th as part of their application to renovate and improve an existing office building and relocate a nearby medical facility. As part of that initial application, the applicant engaged R&amp;M Engineering to conduct a parking analysis. At the board's request, that parking analysis was sent out to the town's outside traffic consultant, who provided comments to the applicant. R&amp;M then engaged in further analysis and provided two response letters addressing all of those concerns. Now, all of R&amp;M's analyses contemplated that the site would employ approximately 12 individuals with five providers maximum. Now, we have received the town's covenants and restrictions this morning, limiting the total number of providers to five, that those CNRs are acceptable to the applicant and the future tenant at that site. I also have a representative of R&amp;M available, should the board have any questions relating with parking.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application was last heard on May 4, 2022. Decision was reserved to have the town's independent traffic consultant, LK McLean Associates, review the traffic and parking analysis prepared by R&amp;M Engineering. As stated by the applicant's attorney, this study was revised to incorporate supplemental information and address comments raised by LKMA, and the following final determination was issued. While it appears that, in fact, their original observations of parking demand were somewhat low, new information still indicates that there should be parking available on street and in the municipal lots to supplement the onsite parking proposed. Insofar as the previously provided analysis indicated that onsite parking is expected to be adequate to meet demand in almost every case, we concur with R&amp;M's conclusion that the parking supply will be adequate to meet demand and, in fact, shouldn't have significant impact on off-site parking supply. Discussion had taken place in regards to the number of practitioners at the site, and as stated by the applicant's attorney, one important note regarding the traffic parking analysis, it did count for five practitioners. So the conditions have been carefully crafted in order to provide the town with the proper recourse should any spillover parking issues occur, such as limiting the number of practitioners to five, the potential for valet service for patients, and shared parking agreements with neighboring properties. Although based on the determination from McLean Associates, the parking supply provided should be adequate. So based on this, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any further from the applicant? Is there a motion, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. Did you have?
I think it's a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd make a motion to grant the application.
It's a motion by Mr. Moriarty to grant the application. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Matamore. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, applications granted. Thank you.
Planning Board Application Decision Item, Kenneth Lausch, north side of PB 2022-013, north side of Quality Street, approximately 147.65 feet west of Jade Street in Oakdale, number 17 Quality Street. Requesting a planning board certificate of appropriateness for the installation of skylights and other in-kind replacements in the planned landmark preservation district pursuant to 68-451A2. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Fluger of Bowler Fluger Architects. We're at 85 East Main Street, Bay Shore, New York, 11706. I was here before the board on June 8. In that hearing, the board had concerns with the skylights that we were proposing on the south side roof. I've consulted with the homeowner, and we have amended the plan from the original submission to show the skylights on the north side instead of the south. We were able to fit smaller skylights that would open to the mezzanine area, which was the purpose of the skylights on the north side. In the time since we submitted the amended plan, the homeowner has reconsidered the skylight that we were proposing that opened into the bedroom on the north side, and we would like to remove that from the application. So just the two upper skylights that you see on the north side elevation are being proposed. Nothing further, and I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. I'm going to go to, who is this? Ms. Wozniak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the previous public hearing, concerns regarding the location of skylights on the south elevation and the color of the new wood siding were brought up by the board. Since then, the applicant has moved the skylights to the north elevation, remaining consistent with other approvals for this property, and has created a note on the drawings stating the new siding will be stained to match the existing. Two of the proposed skylights on the north elevation are a different size and shape than the other existing skylights on the building. If the board is okay with this, planning recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion? Mr. Bruno. Mr. Bruno makes a motion to close the hearing and grant the application. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Frigari, all in favor? Oppose, abstentions, the application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 on the agenda, Town Board Application Recommendation Item, 380 Montalk Highway LLC, CZ 2022-006, south side of Montalk Highway, State Route 27A, approximately 118.24 feet east of DeForest Avenue, West Islip. east of DeForest Avenue, West Islip, 380 Montauk Highway. App can request the modification of covenants and restrictions associated with TC 4046 in order to allow ingress only from Montauk Highway, State Route 27A, and terminate existing covenants and restrictions. I know the applicant is not here, so I'm going to turn to Ms. Colgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was previously heard at the March 23rd hearing. The traffic study was submitted analyzing the use of the property with four practitioners on site instead of the permitted two. Town's traffic consultant concluded that the parking provided is expected to be sufficient to accommodate peak demand at the facility should relaxation of the restriction covenant be granted with a surplus of parking during most times, and that no adverse traffic safety impacts are anticipated due to the proposed modifications to the access arrangements for the facility. We were working on the applicant up until today on modifying some of the covenants, so we leave it to the board. We could recommend grant subject to staff working out the covenants with the applicant, and if not, we would bring it back to the board next month.
Unless there are any questions on the specific application itself, I would be comfortable with approving subject to the applicant agreeing to the conditions as determined by the planning staff. I see no objection to that. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make one.
Ms. Frugari. Made the motion to grant the application subject to the applicant agreeing to the covenants and restrictions as determined by the planning staff. Is there a second? I think by Mr. Moriarty, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, the application is granted. Last item on the agenda, Town Board Application Recommendation Item, 161 East LLC, CZ 2022-013, east side of First Avenue, Bay Shore, zero First Avenue. App can request the modification of covenants associated with TC 5258 in order to modify the approved architectural elevations for an apartment building. Good evening.
Good evening. And thank you for your patience tonight. David Bush, registered architect, 90 West Main Street, Bay Shore, New York, representing the developer, Mr. Larry Gargano, on the application of 161 East Main Street. I have a couple of elevation updates that I'd like to just distribute for the record that I--
We'll make them part of the record. Thank you.
So we presented, we were here on June 22nd, the last planning board hearing, and we presented some proposed, we were in review of the facade, the elevations of 161 East Main Street. During that presentation, we reviewed the application. We indicated that there's no proposed change in apartment density, building footprint, square footages, building heights, things like that. So what the application was really in review over that time was the detail of the elevation of the building. On June 22nd, we reviewed that. It was a reserved decision. Subsequently, we met with Kelly in the planning department on June 29th. We reviewed several applications of facade detail, including mansard roof details, other applications, gables, gambrels, things like that. Ideas, thoughts? We submitted an update to the planning board for this hearing on July 7th. That elevation package reflected a mansard-style roof, which is brought around the entire four-story building. Subsequent to that, we had some other detailed discussions and revisited the original application that was submitted on June 22nd and enhanced the details of that back to reflection some commentary with the planning department. So what's proposed is elimination of the brick detail on the northwest corner, kind of keeping a brick course along the bottom first story, and an introduction of clapboard around the second and third story of the building with the northwest higher point or the four-story element maintaining clapboard or now having a clapboard detail. There's relief up at the fourth story at the primary building elevation. It all pulls back six inches, about six inches, and there's a vertical siding element. And then beyond the original bays that were proposed, there were three primary bays on the building. We've enhanced those elevations with three other minor bays, smaller bays that are two-story that are built out and trimmed. We have approximately six, seven, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, approximately 14 Juliet balconies as well that we've added, and also positioned three sets of non-operational French doors at the northwest elevation. We've also scaled down the entry detail on the west side. So we're happy to see what you have to say and address any other comments. Thank you.
You don't have any colored elevations, do you?
I have the color elevations, which were part of the board record from last time. If I can share them.
Can you send them up?
You want before the staff report? Before the staff report?
Yes. Mr. Bruno.
Oh.
Just be loud enough so we can keep a record. What I'm going to do is I'm going to have Mr. Bruno summarize what he just asked you, then you can answer the question on the record. How's that? So we're going to go back on the record. Mr. Bruno, can you summarize?
I just had a discussion with Mr. Bush. The question has been about the corner of the building. And in the original proposal, what makes the building appear much to be the four stories that it is is that you could count four identical pieces going up. The revised elevation doesn't change that much, but if he gangs some of the pieces together, like he's done in other portions, then you would no longer see a continuum of four identical pieces going up, and that would break the feeling of the four-story building and the plainness of the corner. And he's going to look at that and see if he and Mr. Gargano are in agreement with that. I'm sure he'll come up with something that, he had sent us another picture, which looks something like it. I think, I think we can approve it subject to, I would be willing, subject to staff review.
Is that your understanding of the discussion you both had, and are you in agreement with that?
Sounds perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there further? I'm going to Mr. Colgan for the report.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. We obviously raised concerns that this did not look like a residential building. The planning staff was looking for something a little more transitional. Mr. Bush did take a stab at it. He did add some residential elements to it, which I think are welcome. Mr. Bruno's comments are also well-taken, and I think we can reach an agreement and compromise on what was just presented without making this look like a Frankenstein building, which I think is what we're all trying to avoid. So we agree with Mr. Bruno. I think we could review this subject to staff review.
Any further questions from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
Kudos to no Frankenstein.
Mr. Bruno, I'll let you make the motions.
Make a motion that we approve the application subject to final review by the planning department.
Motion to approve the application subject to final review and approval by the planning department. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Frugari, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, your application is granted.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Yes. Thank you. I looked down there. I didn't know what to do, but Ms. Frugari has made a motion to adjourn. Second by Mr. Moriarty, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Thank you.